Everybody, to our fiscal year 2024-25 City Council Priority Setting Session Workshop. Really appreciate everybody being here, staff and community and of course council. This is an annual process that we go through and we do really well at. We hope to be as efficient as we can today and get everybody out as soon as possible. We will start the meeting with a roll call.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Murbeck?
Here.
Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
You have a court.
Alright, I'll just set the stage a little bit. We do have Spanish translation available here if anybody needs it. And the agenda today is pretty simple. We will turn the time over to the community for public comment. Following public comment, we'll take a short break. The council will have a working lunch. And we'll jump right into the priority setting exercise under the same format that we had last year. Oh, actually, before we start. We're grateful for the work our rec department does to make sure that happens. With that, I'm going to turn the time over to Ken Stiles. He is our finance manager and he will present the mid-year budget update. It will be shared on Tuesday night, a little more succinct, but it sets the stage for discussion today. Ken?
Alright, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. As City Mayor, it's just certain, as noted, this is essentially the same presentation for those from the council last Tuesday. But I was going to be walking you through the mid-year review and financial update. It's going to include the estimates, the day adjustments, and what's going to be going forward for the city. As you started with the revenues, you can see that we had a revised budget of $21 million. Our actuals at the end of December were about 8.4 and were about 40% of budget. Now, compared to last year, we were about 46 of budget. And this is, some of these revenue streams are unfortunately underperforming. Transiting occupancy tax is the biggest one. As you can see, this is our chart comparing our budget, what we expected, to our actuals in the grayed column. In the first three months of the fiscal year, it looks like we were keeping, wasn't the greatest, but we were keeping pace with what we had hoped for, what we expected. But in October, November, December, we've gone, we're coming up short in TOT. Council may remember, TOT started to dip February of last year. We were hoping that it was going to be a temporary adjustment, but it started on four, more or less, behind the year baseline for TOT. Over the last six months, we had a shortfall of about $300K for TOT. Oh? How's this? Oh, much better. Oh, okay. Yes, so the TOT for the first six months, we've come up short by about $300K. And we have an adjustment in the mid-year budget for this item. We think we're going to end the year at 8.6 million, 10% down. Looks like. So these were the adjustments that council approved at the last council meeting. TOT down by 10%. Property taxes are down a little bit by about $150K. Sales and use taxes, tracking better than what, tracking closer, closer than what we had hoped for, but they're still down by about 1%. Our revenue. No increase, we had some increases in other areas. The biggest one being grant funding. And interest overall, and together, our revenue adjustment down to about $800K. As you can imagine, with our revenues dropping for the mid-year, departments were advised against any changes or increases unless it was urgent or necessary. There was one adjustment for the city attorney's budget of $500K. This is for the. There were no adjustments for capital projects. That looks like. We are estimating. K. As you see, this relies from the private screen here. The revenue. Further out. This is, this council knows, this is from public safety increases and revenue. The structural, we knew that was essentially a double two. Behind the scenes staff, this structural deficit came to fruition last budget cycle. And since then, staff has been working at addressing it. But this is just shown to show council and members of the public whatever it would look like if things were to stay the same. So essentially, we took this as a signal to start looking at what we can, what we can adjust now. And.
So as Ken said, this is something staff has been working at. Coming into this fiscal year, we had a structural deficit that we knew we needed to resolve. So we used, because we had really, really strong unassigned fund balance from the previous year, basically just savings that wasn't allocated towards anything specific. We've relied on those to carry us through this fiscal year and allow us to keep operations at current levels. And staff has been meeting since the beginning of this year to identify opportunities to both cut costs and increase revenues. And so a couple of things are happening. The first thing that we're doing, which was already planned, it's something we have to do on a regular basis, is a cost allocation and fee study. And what this does is it looks like at the activities the city does for the community that are paid for the service. So things like recreation services or the planning services. And it takes a look at what is the current cost of providing those services? Match up to that. There's some policy decisions the council will have to make when this study is complete about how much we want to recapture costs through these fees. For, for instance, our recreation program is heavily subsidized. Policy decision that this council made in the past that we wanted our, our programs and the use of our facilities to be accessible to all members of our community. That's something we can talk more about after this research is complete and we can determine. Is the level of subsidy appropriate? Are there other ways to make programs accessible? Should we be charging more? I'm not, I'm not giving an opinion right now. We're going to wait until those numbers are out, but ultimately that will be policy that the council will have to decide on maybe this year. We've also gone line item by line on items through our budget to look at our expenditures and identify places where we can tighten the belt, which has already started this fiscal year. Going into next fiscal year, we're going to make some deep, deep cuts to certain types of expenditures where we're looking at consultant costs. And other things that we are spending money on that are helpful and good for the community, but may not be absolutely necessities. And at least for the identifiable future, we are going to be very focused on expenditures that are absolutely necessary to provide key services and core services to the community. The other area that we're looking at is identifying revenue enhancement options. At last week's meeting, council directed staff to poll on a couple of different tax approaches. Both the sales tax increase and or a parcel tax to help fund the services. Which again is mostly tied to our increased public safety costs. Just for everybody's understanding, our ongoing public safety expenditures, which are mostly contracted through the county, were increased by 43% going into this fiscal year. The county did its own cost allocation study and fee study and realized they were undercharging both the community and other cities for their services. And brought those fees up to where they're at full cost recovery and we're bearing the burden of that right now. The other thing, of course, we're focused on is identifying one-time funds, grants, an opportunity. We've done a really great job of getting grant funding for special projects and we hope to accelerate that work to find grant funding for other programs in the community. Obviously, as we look at expenditures, there's, there's different levels of cuts that we will be looking at. Which will include contractors and consultants, everyday expenses, different program expenses. And we will look at our staffing expenses and likely be at the very least holding open vacant positions. We're going to do a review of benefits to see if there are areas that we could work with staff and the unions to possibly suspend certain benefits for cash savings to the city. And of course, it's not something we want to do, but we will have to look at all of our positions and make sure that we're staffing at the right level right now. The MOU itself still has three years left, so this would be, you know, kind of side letter type work that we'll do with the unions and staff. Well, we'll start with staff and get a sense of what, what could be cut and what the impact to the organization might be. And then work with staff and unions to see if there are opportunities to make those cuts. Ken, I know you're working closer with the consultant on that. Do we have an estimation of the timing of that?
Yeah, we hope to have that done at first draft to late May.
So we'll, we'll try to incorporate whatever we can from that into the fee schedule that goes with the budget. But it's possible that we'll have to make a major adjustment if we see opportunities for significant cost recovery. Okay, are there any questions on the budget portion of this presentation? Okay, the next portion of this is, I will just provide a pretty quick update on, you can jump over to this. And this is going to be hard to see. You can't see it all at once, but we'll use the overview table. These are the five priority areas that have been identified in this fiscal year. And underneath those priority areas are specific projects that are part of our work plan. Items that are in the lighter green are just in progress and doing well. In the darker green, they were completed this year. And those things in orange are areas that were delayed or kind of readjusted our schedule. A couple of these you'll see have that kind of transition from either dark green to light green, dark green to light green to orange, or light green to orange. It just, within each of these categories, there are several subtasks that are part of our work plan. And if anybody's interested in seeing those or part of this agenda, there are copies by the door. And you can look at all the tasks and, and what we've been working on this fiscal year. I'm just going to highlight a few areas where things are going really well and a couple of places we've had delays. Under affordable housing, the housing element development has been a really hits the top. It's been a really important project that the city's been working on. This is a mandated document that we have to provide to housing and community development for the state each year, or each cycle, which is an eight-year cycle. We've already submitted, completed the draft element and submitted it. We have their comments and we're preparing to bring back the revised version to the planning commission and the city council in the next couple of months. And hopefully have our housing element certified at the end of this fiscal year. So that's an item we hope does not carry over into the next fiscal year and we're making good progress to do that. Tied to that, following the housing element, we plan to implement our local land use, local coastal land use plan. This is the general plan document for the city. This is related to land use and what types of uses are best suited to different parts of our community. As many folks probably remember, the, the land use plan was a 10 to 15 year process. It was adopted a couple of years ago in pretty unprecedented fashion. There's usually a lot of back and forth with the coastal commission and we had very little. It was, it was pretty impressive, the work that happened in our community development department. Now that that land use plan has been adopted, now we have to update our zoning and our general plan elements. We were hoping to start on that this fiscal year, but because the housing element took longer than we expected, those general plan elements have been delayed. But we expect to begin those immediately in the next fiscal year. And they are a pretty significant lift for staff. Also, under affordable housing, of course, is housing development projects, which has been a really impressive change this year. We have multiple affordable housing projects under development right now or are getting ready to break ground and several in the pipeline. And then, of course, support for renters. We know that we've established our rental registry program, which will help us gather data and make important policy decisions related to things like rent stabilization and renter protection measures. The rental, rent stabilization and rental protection measures will actually be brought to the council next Tuesday night for a study session. So those that are interested in housing and real estate, I encourage you to attend and learn more and provide your feedback. We're hoping from this session that we'll have enough information to bring a draft back to the council before the end of this fiscal year. Under public health and safety and emergency prep, a lot of great work has been happening within the age friendly initiative specific to health care access here on the coast side. A couple of our council members and staff have been participating in a work group. And in the last couple of months, there's been significant progress working with all of the different healthcare providers that serve coast side residents, mostly on the other side of the hill. And helping them to find a place that they can collaborate together and offer services to coast siders. The pilot project that's been adopted and we're working towards is shared lab services. So people don't have to go over the hill to do blood draws and, and receive lab services. But the ultimate goal in an area where we're making some pretty good progress is to either have urgent care or emergency care services here on the coast. And I'm happy to share that Seton Coastside has come to the table as a great partner. They already have the facility. I think folks know that they're getting ready to close down April 1st to do massive renovations. They had storm damage and will be closed for the next six months or so and reopen late summer, early fall. And the hope is by then, there might be a pilot to start offering more services to the coast side. So really, really exciting developments there. We've also explored the possibility of a healthcare district here on the coast that could fund those types of services. And really, this collaboration with these different agencies will help inform us further on whether or not that's something we should pursue. Mental health support continues to do well. The cares program is, I think it reaches its two-year milestone in the next couple of days, which is really, really exciting. And the most exciting part about it is it's just routine. It just happens and it's, it's really built into the community. So very exciting and grateful to the leadership of the council for helping us get that off the ground. Under emergency preparedness, we are working on the safety element, which is part of that general plan implementation. But it also will inform evacuation routes. And so we're working with all of our emergency prep partners and county D E M on the general plan, which will allow us this coming fiscal year to start the evacuation planning process. The emergency operations plan update and the emergency public information plan updates have actually, the drafts have been ready for a while. They've been tested, which is really great, and we've made adjustments based on some of the emergencies we've faced. And I believe we've scheduled disaster council meeting in the coming weeks to, as part of our ordinance code. The disaster council needs to review those and prove them before we bring them to the full council for adoption. And then our community prep day was a real success this year, and so we're planning it for April 20th. I hope people get that on their calendar and there'll be notifications, but there'll be an event downtown to help inform residents and connect them on emergency preparation related issues. One area under this topic that was disappointing was our preparations for a safe parking program. In 2022, the city was instrumental in helping project We Hope, which is a nonprofit on the other side of the hill. Get a grant from the county to operate, open and operate a safe parking program here on the coast. Which would essentially create a space where people living in RVs could safely park, have access to sanitation facilities and services. And really develop plans to get out of those vehicles and into permanent housing. Unfortunately, that project was delayed due to the winter storms of 2023 and the shooting incident. And ultimately, we could not find a location that could accommodate this use and would accommodate this use. And so the county has repurposed that grant towards a different purpose, still serving the coast side and these residents, but not towards a safe parking program. So one of the things that we'll talk about during the exercise is that something we still want to dedicate time to trying to pursue. Or can that be a more passive item that as funding becomes available, we can more actively pursue it? Under sustainability, lots of great things happened this year. Our climate action plan was adopted and we are now very deep into the preparation process for the climate adaptation plan. Along with that, SB 1383, which is short-lived climate pollutants, things like organic waste. There's new legislation that has a lot of requirements for the city and its businesses. And we've made a lot of great strides moving that work forward. Another important item under this is stormwater. And we know that we've, based on the flooding that we experienced last year and the erosion that we're experiencing, stormwater is a really, really important topic for the city to remain focused on. And we're working towards a stormwater master plan update. But the focus right now is on some specific high intensity areas in the city to try to resolve issues and learn from the work we do there. Places like the Pullman Ditch and the Keigho Water Course are our focus right now. And we hope to get some grant funding to help support some of those projects. Under economic recovery and development, great progress has been made. As we presented last week, the Streetscape's master planning is really moving along and should be wrapped up during this fiscal year. Which will allow us to start to pursue specific project funding to implement some of those plans. Additionally, the Opportunity Center of the Coastside, which will provide job support, entrepreneurial support, business development services to the coast side funded by the county. Is soft opened already at 637 Main Street. The chamber is our operating partner. We are getting ready to launch an incubator focused on the coast side's unique assets. And we'll have a grand opening. Karen, tell me if I'm wrong, but we've scheduled it for April 4th. Okay, we're waiting for confirmation. We'll pencil that in the evening of April 4th. We'll do a ribbon cutting, let the community come in and check it out. It's a very, very exciting development and we're grateful for our partnerships with the chamber and the county and other community partners for making this possible. And it's already offering services and, and I've heard some really great testimonials from people I know in town who have taken advantage of the services. Under transportation, circulation and mobility, we continue to work on important capital projects like the Highway 1 Safety North Project and the East Side Parallel Trail North Segment Four. Which will connect where our current East Side Parallel Trail ends near Rocket Farms with that new trail segment that the county installed in El Granada that ends at the city limits. Both of those projects unfortunately were delayed due to the coordination required with Caltrans. But we're making good progress and we expect to begin construction next spring on the trail project. And later in the year on the Highway One North project. Other exciting news, we've just received federal funding to begin planning the East Side Parallel Trail South project, which will connect South Main Street to Miramone's Point Road in the south. Which hopefully will provide safe transportation both on bikes and walking for people living at Kenyatta Cove, Ocean Colony and Moon Ridge to get to our downtown area without having to get into a vehicle. Other important work is improvements to the Coastal Trail and then Naomi Patrick's Trail. There is a upcoming Caltrans project that will actually do an overlay of the Naomi Patrick's Trail along Highway One, which is desperately needed. And we're grateful that they've included that in that project. And they'll be looking at strategic places to do overlays on Highway One as well, which is important to keep that, that road well maintained while they hopefully continue to make progress on 92. Another area that came up last year was the Sky Tram Project. There's a group in the community that is working towards getting a feasibility study to determine if a tram service could be provided from downtown Half Moon Bay over the mountains to the peninsula. There's been a grant identified and staff has worked with that group to procure or to apply for that grant. The, the key right now is finding an agency that will receive the grant and lead the master planning for that. If there's any other areas council would like updates on, again, the updates are in the report and we're happy to talk about those more. Otherwise, we're ready to move on to our actual exercise here. Any questions from council? Okay, so mayor, I think we're ready to take public comment. And for those giving public comment, if you can just step up to the podium when your name is called, there's a microphone there. Just press the button and make sure that there's a little light at the base of the gooseneck that will turn from red to green when that's when it's on. And once the first person turns it on, just leave it on for the rest of the commenters, please.
Diane Sajic?
Can you guys hear me? Great. My name's Diane Sajic. I come visit you about once a year or so. Hit all the councils, I'll just say.
a year. So hit all the councils. I'll just say, this with all sincerity, you guys are one of the better-looking councils out there. Some of these cities are just plain hard to look at. Among my other charms, I've got an MBA. And you guys have what I call a spiraling structural deficit, negative 5.4 million. That's gigantic. You need more tot and you need it huge. The project Home Key Hotels killed the golden goose by they're taking away your annual revenue here and they're not replacing it. They're essentially socializing the cost of emergency housing on people. You're gonna have to put a tax measure on to cover that if you don't. You guys may remember two years ago, I was here telling maybe three Bob Nesbit not to take a salary cut here because it would mean he was gone immediately. You can't cut labor. You can't do clawbacks. These people make mortgage decisions, college decisions, retirement decisions, all based on this. Think about trying to clawback your $1 million per year library loan fee from the county. Also, the more tot what you need, go to Coastal. Within a year, they'll tell you exactly what you need. You need small square footage, affordable hotel keys, more keys, no kitchen units at all in these. You need the smallest, essentially like a Japanese tourist hotel for the coast there. There's this, there's an emergency shortage of affordable hotel housing in the coastal zone. If you call them, they'll tell you exactly what you need and you can get stuff approved within 90 days through Coastal on there. You need more tot and you need it now. Thank you.
Good morning again. I'm here. Couple things, several things. One, would be nice in the future to see the word recreation on this chart. And it probably could come under mental health, public health, any of those. So, as I said, here to talk about recreation. During the last year, I've attended the Friends Meeting, quite a few of them. I've attended quite a few of the Park and Recreation Commission meetings. And in my opinion, there seems to be a lack of communication between these groups and the city council. So it just seems like the Friends should have a representative always at the Park and Recreation Meeting. And it seems that sometimes a Park and Recreation Commission should have a representative come several times a year and tell you what they've accomplished, tell you, the city council, what they've accomplished. It seems like the task of the Park and Recreation Commission is to find an improvement and improve the recreational opportunities through the park and recreation, park and recreation facilities. The last meeting, we spent two hours, the two hours were spent on the Streetscape. I know it's important. I know it's a high-profile city project, but it's the third time it was on the agenda for parks and recreation. And I, with the lack of parks and recreation facilities, the time maybe could be spent on other things besides a Streetscape for three meetings. All right, some examples of what could be done in the near future and doesn't cost the city any money, because I know the city doesn't have any money. One, there's a group that wants a community garden. And I've heard their presentation several times. Nobody seems to take up on it. No one seems interested. It would serve a lot of people in a lot of ways. Get people outside, garden, produce vegetables, maybe go to the school, teach the kids how to raise vegetables, cook vegetables, and so forth. So the community garden, there's a group of people that really want to do that. And it's not going to cost the city any money. Or it might cost the city a little money, but not a lot of money. All right. And the second item I'd like to bring to your attention is the Events Center. The Events Center is a gym. It has basketball hoops in it. It has a basketball court in it. It seems like that building has closed more hours than it's open. It could be open 10 hours a day, seven days a week, basketball, free play leagues, volleyball, badminton, pickleball. It's a beautiful facility. Why isn't it open and being used? All right, number three, I went by this morning, the Kitty Hernandez Park. It's a park. There's not even a table there. If somebody wants to go and have a picnic lunch or sit down and put a book on a table, there's no tables there. So I know you use it for, on the pumpkin festival, you use it for the band stand. But the tables could be, they probably need to be anchored so they don't walk away. But you unscrew them and you take them away if you need the space. Be nice to see a few tables at that park. And again, that's not a huge item. All right. I walked around this building the other day and there's space around this building. And I know the city owns the lot where the house is. And I'm sure there's plans being drawn up.
And can you please wrap it up?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you please wrap it up?
I couldn't understand.
The time's up. Can you please wrap it up?
The three-minute timer went off about a minute ago.
Oh, I didn't know I was on a time. All right. How do I know where the time is? Okay. Excuse me, I didn't know that. All right. Well, I guess I can't finish. Okay. I just, oh, one last thing I want to say is I hope the city doesn't go in debt for the Streetscape. I've listened to it. It sounds very expensive.
Do you have three minutes, Hal?
First, thank you for, you know, the presentations so far. And it's exciting to hear a lot of the positives that are going on. You know, clearly, there's areas of concern. And you hear all of us come up here and speak about the areas of concern without acknowledging, you know, 80 or 90% are great, 10 or 20%, you know, receiving criticism. You know, all you'll hear from most people is the latter. You'll hear some of it from me. But, you know, I think the largest issue that I would raise to the council is that with COVID, there was much less communication. And I think there's still not nearly enough communication between the citizenry and the council. A lot of things are mediated through staff. The staff is busy, has a lot of projects that they're heads down on, working very hard on. And some things just don't get communicated well or not much at all. And if you're going to be going to the citizenry for taxes in the future, you don't want to repeat what the school district spent a decade failing to get parcel taxes passed, you know, because of a lack of communication and a lack of aligned priorities between the voting public and the council and the staff. I would point to three projects that I have brief comments on. There are very few updates on projects on the city project pages, particularly one that impacts me personally, the Poplar Street Project. I'd like to see council members actually come to the street and find out more directly from a lot of the people on the street that are affected, who are pretty unhappy about a lot of aspects of the project, although happy about certain of the improvements that are also in the works. I know that there are large projects that address very important needs that also maybe some parts are not being heard well. I think you have to come up with a different approach than breaking the height limit to 555 Kelly, because I think in the end, the citizenry don't want to see a flood of five-story buildings downtown. And if you are going to open one five-story building, you will receive pressure for more. So you need to make a case for and put that before a vote of the public, I believe, or else you're at risk that you'll get a backlash that affects your tax proposals. Lastly, I know somebody has walked Moon Ridge and compared it to Stone Pine Project and said that for the number of people living in Moon Ridge, there's a lot more cars than you're allotting for the number of cars for the number of people who are to be housed at Stone Pine. And similarly, there's not as much play area that's allotted and things like that. So I realize, you know, we only have three minutes. I'd be very thrilled to meet with and share some of these thoughts with the New Interim Community Development Director. And welcome. Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to So we're doing one public comment section. I had two cards for me, but... Yes, but one.
I would defer to the mayor. I would note the speaker did not take his whole three minutes. So if you want to allow for Heather to... There is two public comment periods during this meeting, but they were intended to allow for folks who couldn't make it before, you know, much time to have an opportunity and then to be in another public comment period after the next agenda item.
Yeah, can we...
Yes, I defer to the mayor. I'd rather than make you wait for the second one.
A minute thirty be... Good for you? A minute thirty? Perfect. Thank you.
It's increasingly aware that there was a giant Chinese community in Half Moon Bay at one point. There was bars, there was brothels, there was a Chinese jail. The first two men sentenced to die in San Mateo County were Chinese that were sentenced to hang here. I found about 400 different articles historically on the Half Moon Bay in Chinatown. And no one seems to have any idea what happened. And there's no sort of incentive to recognize them. May 1906 was when the Half Moon Bay, sorry, the Chinatown was burned down in Monterey. I think it was May 14th when the Chinatown was burned down in San Jose in 1906. You had a very similar incident here when there was a mass exodus of Chinese people. And it's disappeared from history. You take a look at those, those are rough samples of about 400 historical articles that are available. But it's very interesting. And you've got about 60 days before you could patch together a resolution where you might, you might talk about it at a May meeting. Thank you very much.
So we're waiting for lunches to arrive. So I think what we could do now is we can, I can at least get the context of and the plan for the exercise that we're going to do, if you jump to that other tab. And then we can decide if we want to jump into it or take a break. It's set up where we could really take a break at any time. So just as a reminder from last year, we, we use this tool so that on the fly, we could collect feedback and prioritize feedback. So what's in front of you, if we zoomed out where you could see all the categories and all the comments, you wouldn't be able to see it. So we're gonna, we're gonna kind of focus in on each area. But we have the five current priority areas, which are affordable housing, public health, safety, and emergency preparation, community and climate resilience and sustainability, economic recovery and development, and transportation, circulation, and mobility. We also have a fifth or a sixth column, which is other or parking lot. And this will actually capture anything that we just aren't sure where it fits or it doesn't fit. These categories can change. But last year and what we've done in previous years, we actually created a two-year work plan from the priorities. And the updates that I shared with you covered a lot of the priorities, work plan areas for this current fiscal year and some which carry over into the next fiscal year. And so just to orient you, for instance, what I've done is I've filled in, in each of these columns, the existing work plan items that are carrying over into the next fiscal year. If there's a black shaded area next to it, these are really required. We don't, we don't have discretion on whether or not we do these things. And they're either required because of a regulatory requirement, a legal requirement. We've got grant funding that is already paid for part of it, and we have to continue that grant funding. Or I've used a little discretion based on just council priorities and community need. If it's got a gray box next to it, it's not to diminish it, but it, there's more discretion for the council. You could change directions. You could decide not to do it. You could prioritize it differently. If the text of the item is in red, that means it's a very heavy lift for staff. This is something that requires a lot of staff resources. It may also require major financial resources. If it's in purple, it's a more moderate lift. We have to plan for it. We have to prep for it and staff will be dedicated to it. But it's not, it's not those super heavy lifts. And then if it's green, it's much more operational. It's something that we can just absorb into our everyday work. So maybe if you, in council, you have paper copies of this in front of you. Again, this is just to get us started. What we did last year, and this is at your discretion, Mr. Mayor, is we went council member by council member, and each council member got the opportunity to kind of go through and talk about the different priority areas, talk about how they feel about existing work plan priorities and new priorities that they're looking at, wanting to implement in the coming years. After we've gone through the entire council, then, it was a much more free-flowing discussion that ultimately led to prioritizing and making some decisions and took some votes, actually. Once we get this list pared down and kind of finalized, staff will take this and come back at a council meeting in May with the actual built-out work plan with dates of estimated completion. It's similar to the work plan document that's attached to the packet. Oh, this, oh, this isn't in there? Okay, sorry. Sorry, I think this was sent, but it's not included in the packet. I apologize for that. So while we do that, we'll work from here. I'll also, just going back to the context of our current situation, I think this year of all years, we need to be really, really mindful of our constraints, that adding new projects that either require additional staff time or potentially consultant time, that's going to be very challenging to implement in a year like this and going forward. There might be something that is so important that we say we want to do this anyways, and we're gonna have to make some tough decisions about other programming or other priorities going forward. But I just want you to be mindful of the constraints that we have. Of course, as we build out the work plan and develop the budget for the next fiscal year, we'll, we'll take into account some of your prioritization and help make some of those decisions as we move into the budget year. But I think it's important right now at this meeting to just be mindful of that as we make some of those decisions. So with that, Mayor, if you'd like to begin, Okoye from our Community Development Department is here, and she'll be adding on the fly to this document. I'll be doing the same. And Mary Wirtha from the CMO will continue to take detailed notes of public comment and the things that you're talking about today.
Can we get the copy, the printed copy?
Is the food here now? Do we want to take a break and get food and hopefully we get the copies?
Yeah.
Okay. For the community, there are snacks and small food items here behind you. We'll probably take about a 10-minute break to get our food, get back to the table. I hope everybody's okay with people kind of eating, doing kind of a working session, eating session. We did that last year. It seemed to work out. Okay. So Mayor, do you want to take a 10-minute break?
Yes, yes, let's do 10 minutes.
Yeah, we'll do that while we're on our break and have them ready before we restart. Great. Thank you. We went to the exercise. A couple of points. This table was sent to council. Mayor speaking. Councilmember Armand, I think he raised his attention. There would be added different things since then, based on just other work that we're doing. So it's things that aren't necessarily shown up on the priority plan, but are actively happening. So things like under other, the November election, it's a major lift for our kitchen party. So I just added that so that you just keep that in mind, that it has to happen. It's a big lift for us. I think, I can't remember what else I added. Oh, the ALPR. I think, I don't remember what else I added, oh, the ALPR work. Not a huge lift, but again, it's a split that we're currently working on that will carry over to the next fiscal year, just for that conference. It's not going to capture everything, but hopefully it helps us set the context. The other thing I'm going to share and talk to Jason from PCC. When you speak, we need the microphone like this close to your face. If we don't hear it loud and clear over the speakers, it's not going to be recorded in the video. So if we could just keep that in mind, that's your choice. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we're ready to move forward.
Yes, please, let's get started.
So, so again, as a reminder, what we've done in the past, and again, it's your prerogative, is each council member's had a chance to kind of own the table, talk about their priorities, ask any questions. We do have a lot of staff here that can help answer the technical questions about projects. Go through each council member and have a bigger discussion.
Yes, let's do it the same way that we've done it as of the past year. Uh, yes, Vice Mayor?
Automatic license plate readers.
The money that Ops granted, April, at. Climate, unity and climate. This line, I'm favor of. Water. Flux. Pilot favor. Stormwater master plan. Really important. We have to better consult with the head of the city where I think. Washington. Favor of the master plan. As been mentioned, the garden. Favor of the City Hall Parklet and Bureau Plan. And this is a hard one, but the annexation exploration. I think not only should we try to explore annexing Moon Ridge, Miramar, the farms on 92, but also as part of that effort, we need to explore having a healthcare district, as Matthew was saying. That'd probably have to go through LAFCO, but it's worth doing. We need the money for part, for the medical facilities, which I hope we can get on the coast. I'm in favor of the digital infrastructure, both the 5G coordination and the funding for the telco access. So those are items that Matthew has listed as flexible, but I think we should support them. And on that, in that vein, the Main Street revitalization part of the streetscape, I think will, in the end, will pay for itself in the sense that we're going to get more tourists coming to Half Moon Bay, spending money in hotels and restaurants. So I think we, it's, we need to have a more vibrant and exciting Main Street and the rest of the revitalization part of the streetscape plan. So I think that's important. Moving on to transportation. The first four items listed are sort of non-negotiable, so I won't talk about that. I think we should add to the list the safety improvements on Redondo Beach Road and the intersection of Highway One. We talked about that as part of the Coastside Land Trust appeals last week. And independent of whether what happens at the Coastal Commission, from a safety standpoint, I really think that we should work with Caltrans to get the intersection of Redondo Beach Road and Highway One improved, the turning pockets, perhaps a signal. And Redondo Beach Road itself is, needs the city's efforts to make it a lot safer, to get rid of the steep fall-offs, the potholes, the narrowness, anything we can do to make that better, because I think there will be more and more people coming on that road, and we need to improve it, and that's a matter of public safety. Lastly, as we abundantly learned, we need a tax measure because we're going to, we have this $5.9 million structural deficit, which is really serious. And although in the past I have not been in favor of the sales tax, this is regressive. I think in the end, we may need to raise our sales tax. We need to find out from polling whether or not that partial tax has a hope of passing. But we need to get that $5.9 million one way or another. And there isn't a lot of fat to cut in the city budget, so we need to increase revenue really soon. I am opposed to changes in Measure D. I think Measure D has served us well. And especially if we continue to afford points for making sure that we have the requirement that we have affordable ADUs and give them preference. I think that's important. I think we have enough Measure D allocations to keep the city vibrant. And I don't think we should change the way we have implemented Measure D. And lastly, I think the Coastside tram is something that we should explore more because it would have the effect, if all goes well, to not only improve the revenue that the city ultimately can get, but by making the city more, at the end of this, it would make it so that we could have more, more people coming to the city. We could also improve the commute, make it possible so that we can get over the hill faster. So many, many things are, could be solved at once by increasing revenue ultimately, although it probably not immediately. It would make it easier to reduce traffic on 92. So even though people think it's extravagant, I think at this point, we should really start thinking more about building that. So I'm in favor of that. That's my list.
Thank you. Councilmember Penrose?
Yeah. In going over this list, I have to say that there are a lot of things that I'm going to say we should be cutting, not because I don't think they're important to the city for the, for our growth, for our sustainability, but because we don't have any money. So if, if I have to look at the list, I have to look at this list with the idea that we don't have the money for many of these things here. And that's where I'm coming from. So I'll start with affordable housing. The LUP and Housing Element Implementation, does that need to be done this year?
Our attorney is saying not necessarily. I would defer a little bit to Steve here and his expertise.
I'm talking about the legal requirement, not whether it's a practical thing to do.
Well, I guess what would be the implications of not pressing forward on that this fiscal year?
Without knowing definitively, I think that.
Can't hear you.
Test. Hello, there we go. Okay. I don't know definitively, but I would say that the city has committed to the Housing Element work as, as a component of the coastal, the coastal plan. And so I, the only thing I wouldn't know, the only thing I would need to know for sure, I'd need to check is if we, if what that commitment actually is. But having, thinking back to having read that plan, it was a commitment of the city to, to implement. And my understanding was to implement after, to not take that break. So if you're suggesting to take a break for a year, I don't think that would be consistent with the commitments of the city thus far, and likely with HCD and the Housing Element work that we're doing now.
Gotcha, I, I hear that. It still doesn't answer the question, must it be done this year? Because we're talking about things in red being heavy lift. You're saying, this is a heavy lift, this is going to take a lot of staff time. I don't want staff spending a lot of time on something that could be put off for another year if we could do that. So that's where I'm coming from on it. Not that I don't think it's important and that we haven't made a commitment in the past to do it. I know we have. I know where the city has been headed. Let's get this thing done, I get it. I'm just saying, in my opinion, that's one of the things that we could put off for a year.
I'll add one more, one more thing to that. And I realize, you know, Steve is new and I have not as much in the weeds on some of the details. But one aspect of our LUP update that would be helpful to us is that it does say that while the city works on the implementation, the LUP policies serve as our implementation. So I think that's going to give us a little bit of wiggle room with the Coastal Commission and actually HCD, to the extent we're not quite as at pace on that implementation phase. Now, how much we can push it, I don't know the answer to that.
And if I can just add, so the housing element will actually be wrapped up this fiscal year, hopefully. So, and we have a legal commitment to do that. So I think that's why it's separated from this. The other element that is actively being worked on, and we've already invested in, a countywide effort to update the safety element. So, and that falls under multiple categories, not just under, you know, the LUP implementation, but also emergency preparedness. And like I said earlier, it's going to form evacuation planning and some of these other things. So I think what I would recommend here, depending on what we hear from the rest of the council members, is obviously we want to finish the housing element. We continue the collaborative work, which we've already put money into a countywide effort on the safety element. And we'll explore the implications of the other elements. And when we come back with a work plan, we can describe either, you know what? The rest of these can wait, as Catherine has mentioned, or there might be some that have some specific time requirements or funding requirements.
Okay, I, I understand that. And I definitely understand there are legal requirements that I don't understand. So that's why I'm posing the question. In terms of public affordable housing projects, I'm all for going ahead, let's do it. I don't know what the, the Coastside Unified School District has to do with us. They're talking about putting in teacher housing. Why are we spending staff time involved with that? That should be their job, not ours.
Yeah, and, and I'm thinking maybe we, even though it's a public project, maybe it moves more into the private realm, because our role in it really is more like any other private development. There's a certain amount of consultation that our staff has to have on any private development as they try to move the permitting forward and the planning forward. So I think we probably move that into the private project realm, and it's really the balls in the other agency's court, not ours.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
And, and in terms of the other private affordable housing projects, I don't know how much staff time that takes, but it seems to me staff has been talking to Metzger and Mobile Parks for a long time now, and they have not moved their butts and gotten anything done. So I don't want to put a lot of time into that. I think if they want to, if they want to do it, fine, but let's not waste our time trying to get them to do the job that they keep saying they want to do. I'm all, obviously, all for rent stabilization and rental protections implementation. That was something I asked to be put on the agenda. I'm, I think it's critical if we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about helping the people that, that live in our community that have the least, then we have to be talking about how we can deal with the outrageous rents that they are currently forced to pay. So I, I want us to continue to look into that and to continue to work on it. We may not be able to come up with minimum wage increases this year. We don't know yet, but until we have the information based on what programs are cut and how many folks in the community are affected by it, I don't know. It seems to me that's, that's a job we could give to somebody like Alice and say, Alice, please get the information for us, we need the information. And we'd have to oversee. And we'd have to oversee it, obviously, but, you know, maybe we could push some of the work off onto groups like ALAS and Coastide Hope to get that information for us, rather than having a staff person out there running around the community and trying to figure out who's on what programs and what programs will be cut if they, if we do increase the minimum wage. Public health, safety, and emergency preparation, I think, is probably, next to affordable housing, the most critical thing we should be looking at right now. I am sorry that we don't have an evacuation plan yet. I know we're working on it, but we've been working on it for three years now. It's time to get that work done. I'm fine to let go of the safe parking program. I think the age-friendly implementation has done a fabulous job so far of getting us interested in, and getting other healthcare organizations interested in doing something about an urgent care here on the coast, starting with the idea of labs. But I don't want staff spending their time on it. This is a problem for the local practitioners. It's a job for the local health practitioners, Stanford, Dignity, Sutter, you know, Seton, all of them. And yes, staff has to be involved, but I don't want them spending time on it. They have to be involved because of grants. And that's the only reason they need to be involved. I would like to see the community take over that job and try to figure out how they can get it done because that's, they're the community are the people that know what's needed here, not necessarily staff. So that's where I'm coming on that. Tabletop and community exercises, I'm not sure what that means. This is a tabletop community exercise? We need this, right? Do we need a lot of others?
A tabletop exercise is like an emergency preparedness drill where the city and its partners actually run through practice demonstrations of emergencies. Unfortunately, we haven't needed to do too many of them because we've had real emergencies to test those out with. But it's a pretty normal, and that's why it's in green. It's a routine part of emergency preparedness and response and is a pretty light lift from that standpoint.
Okay, great. That's fine. I just wasn't sure quite what it was.
Yeah, maybe we'll reword it so that it's a little clearer to the layperson, exactly what we're talking about.
Community climate resilience. Yes, we've got to get our climate adaptation plan done, finalized and adopted. Recycled water, I think I'm with Councilmember Rarbach on that. Let's have CCWD take the lead on that. And if they don't want to do it, I don't want to spend our time trying to talk them into doing it. So I'd say let's let go of that for a year. The Kehoe, this watershed, the stormwater watershed analysis, all of those are critical. And they're critical because they're part of our climate adaptation plan. And they're going to be part of dealing with all of the issues like moving the coast side trail. They're going to be dealing with issues like erosion on the coast side. When we talk about situations like that, I don't want us to be working as a city on them. These are coast-wide issues. If we're going to do an analysis of what we need, we need to get the county involved because the county is responsible for the rest of the coast side. So, you know, I think we ought to be coordinating with them rather than trying to handle the whole load ourselves. And I don't know exactly how that would work, but it's just a gut feeling I have on it. That can't, you can talk about the Kehoe watershed, you can talk about the Pullman ditch, but there are ditches and watersheds all over, up and down the coast. And can't we somehow get the county to look at the coast? And the watershed on the coast is a coast side issue? And help do the analysis. Let them spend the money and do the analysis. Anyway, that's my thinking. Always have somebody else spend their money. I wasn't here for the streetscape presentation, but I did see the packet. So I understand what's going on. I am all in favor of economic recovery and development. I don't want to spend money on it this year. I think there are some small things that we could do. I don't want to spend a whole lot of money trying to figure out what colors the community would like to see on the buildings. It's money, it's staff, it's all of that. So yes, let's look at that and look, what parts of the streetscape's projects can we work on? Can we maybe let go of the parklet idea for right now because that's highly controversial? And talk about just one-way parking on one side of the street and bicycle improvements? Maybe that, maybe if we did that and let everything else wait another year, it might make sense. I would like to see us look at that in terms of steps.
And maybe if I can provide a little context around that project. What's listed here, we added, based on Councilmember Rarbach's comments, the master plan itself, and Karen, please let me know if I'm off here. But I believe that portion of the project will be done this fiscal year. And so any extension of that into future years is really about implementation. It's looking for funding. It's looking to, if there's certain segments of it that we can do, starting to work on the entitlements to get that done. And so just for that context, the actual planning part will be done this fiscal year. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay, so the, once the planning is done, then we can look at the implementation in terms of steps. I don't want a lot of staff time spent on it. I'd rather have them spend their time on our evacuation plan. What do we do when the fire and the earthquake and the floods come? That's, to me, is number one. Number one. Well, number two, affordable housing and minimum wage, and that's number one. How many staff actually are working on transportation now? How many staff are actually working on the first four items, which are heavy lifts?
I could get back to you with that. Unfortunately, Ma's had a personal item he had to deal with today. But I do know that on most of those projects, you're going to have planning staff involved. You're going to have engineering staff involved. And of course, you're going to have Ma's involved as the city engineer, public works director. And then when we get towards actually building these projects, my time is involved, others for communications purposes. I think one key, though, is for the Highway One Safety North and the East Side Parallel Trail items. Those are heavy lifts, but they're, as I've mentioned, they're delayed because of the coordination with Caltrans and missing, you know, construction seasons. And so those will be heavier lifts at the end of the fiscal year or into the next fiscal year.
Okay.
So maybe we'll find a way to indicate that.
Okay, thanks. TDM, tell me again what that means.
Sorry, Transportation Demand Management.
Okay. Forget about that. That's not something we have to do, right?
There's discretion there.
All right.
Obviously, traffic is an issue on the coast.
Anything we can cut out, let's cut out. Okay, other, parking lot. Revenue enhancement measure exploration and preparation. Stop spending. It seems to me that right now is not the time to be spent on how do we get more money, unless we're talking about a specific thing like a tax, parcel tax. And then I think it makes sense to have staff working on that. But just to look at different enhancement measures and exploration and preparation, I'm sorry. No, let's just stop spending.
I'm going to reword it because what you just described is where we're at. So we have a specific direction on a sales tax and parcel tax to do some polling with the community to determine if either of them are feasible.
Great.
I'll reword that at least.
Okay, great. And we can't do anything about the November election. But let's all vote, please. I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Reddick?
I think we have to complete the housing elements.
I'm sorry, can you lift it up just a little bit?
Housing element, definitely a priority to get that done. I agree that we should be working on the safety element, but if we could just drag our feet a little bit in LUP implementation, I think that would be okay because I think the safety element sort of covers us a little bit there. I think the public affordable housing projects are already in play. As for the private affordable housing projects, I think we just, you know, as far as the mobile home park on 92 is concerned, I'd like us to work the property over. Mobile homes are a chance for people to own units where they can build more. To me, it's just like a note printer, and I'd hate to see that go away. I don't support rent control or rental registry. I'd rather take that $200,000 and probably more dollars and look at maybe incentivizing the mobile home park. I think there are other ways to spend that money that would be more effective. As far as public health and safety, I agree with Councilmember Penrose that I think the age-friendly initiative has been beneficial. I do agree that, you know, we should probably, you know, put the onus on development at that more to community members. But I don't, I don't want to see it go away. So I'm hoping if we back off a little bit, people will continue the hard work on that. Evacuation planning, definitely a priority. Oh, I do support further discussion on the ALPR policy and implementation. But I'd like to take off the menu, the safe parking program and the minimum wage ordinance for now because of the amount of work that's involved there and because of the information that we still lack. I think we can let that go. Community and climate resilience, I support finalizing and adopting the cap for sure. As for recycled water, I've had very recent discussions with Mary Logram and a couple of members of the CCWD board. And they're backing off of recycled water. The initial work they've done shows that we're just not there in terms of portable reuse, which is where they want to go with this. And so they're not going to be doing any further action for this time being. And as for SAM taking it on, I just think there are more urgent matters around the sewer authority having to do with flood impacts and such like that. So I think we need to let the recycled water go for the time being. Keep an eye out for, have our grants person keep an eye out for the grant landscape on that. I think stormwater watershed analysis is really important. In the county, it's becoming more and more a high-profile issue. I'm our representative on the City-County Association of Governments, and we're working through our first strategic plan. And it looks like stormwater is going to be very high-profile in the work of the C-KAG for the next five to 10 years. And more and more cities are passing stormwater fees. And I think if we want to be in a position to capture some of the grant money that I think is going to be coming through both state and federal sources through C-KAG, I think we need to be, to be ready and have the information and identify priority projects. Plus, as we know, that the storms are only going to get more intense and more frequent. So I think stormwater is really, really important. And we're going to want to do work at some point in the next couple of years. I think I'm looking at a stormwater fee, but we need that planned first. So I would say definitely we want to keep stormwater upfronts to be able to capture grant funding and to be able to provide a match for any project we're going to do. As for economic recovery and development, I'm happy to let go for the time being the coast side lands network development, the city hall parklet, Mural Plan. I do want us to continue to work on our digital infrastructure because I think that's a key fundamental issue underlying economic development. And until we really address that, you know, we're not going to get a lot of traction. I don't, you know, I think there's a committee working on Hard Work and Memorials, so maybe we can offload the work on that. But I think it's important to do. As for implementing the streetscape plan, I think we need to back off on that. I'm really supportive of doing it, but it's a lot of money and a lot of time. And I think we need to, you know, if there are really inexpensive, low-hanging fruit sort of projects we can do in terms of landscaping and stuff. But in terms of, you know, major changes to the street configuration, you know, I think we just need to, you know, forego that for a while. Plus, I don't think we've addressed in that streetscape plan the issue of Main Street as an escape route. And I think we need to get that discussion because people are going to want to get out any which way they can. And if we're reducing the capability of Main Street to be an evacuation route, I think that's important. So I just wanted to note that. I do want us to continue to focus on Carter Park because I think Carter Park, once it's done and we have events, that in and of itself will be a stimulus, I think, to economic development downtown. So I don't want us to cut corners on that. I think this is really critical and will be sort of anchor, you know, facility for us in terms of getting more economic development downtown. So Carter Park's got to remain a priority. As far as transportation circulation and mobility, I first want to say I will not support any cuts whatsoever to operation and maintenance of our roadways, streets, curb and gutter, sidewalks. To me, that's core mission. I'm not willing to cut there at all. And I think we need a policy that's fix-it first before we consider, you know, new projects. I think we're kind of into the Poplar Street project, at least on the east side. I think we have to finish that, but we might, you know, revisit our scope for Poplar Street. I support the trail work. We need connectivity. It's really, really important. So I'm not willing to forego that. You know, I don't honestly like the Highway One Safety project. I think it should have been a roundabout, not a signalized intersection, but I think we're already down that road too far. I think to back off. But I just wanted to note, I just appreciate it. TDM, I'm glad to take that off the table, but I think O and M is top of mind for me. And we have a maintenance, a robust maintenance staff right now. And I think, you know, there's nothing worse than letting our guard down. Appearance and care that you demonstrate in the community. You know, we're not going to get economic development if streets are dirty and disrepair, you know, for our, you know, if there isn't care shown. So I'm really dead set against doing anything that's going to see ourselves in shit. Other, first of all, I really appreciated Ann Moore's comments about parks and recreation. You know, we talk about mental health and everything. I think, you know, creating opportunities in the community to connect. They have sports, they have recreation or foundation. I don't think we can keep putting Band-Aids on our mental health program. You know, it's not a long-term thing. We have to start foundationally and have a robust parks and recreation offering. We don't, and I don't think we can do it this year either. But I would like to see us provide water service for the community there. These people have been working on this project now, I think, six or seven years. They're a dedicated, energized group. They're willing to raise money to make it happen. Others may need the water hookup, maybe a little permitting around that, I'm not sure. But I think we can at least do that. And we want to keep up the DOT part, make sure it doesn't get a little outdated. I'm happy to consider polling. Polling results were a financial measure. I'm not going to come down on one side or the other now, so we did polling. I think it's really important to the voters. Likewise, I think it's important... Likewise, I think it's important to give people a chance to weigh in on what I think is a small change to Measure D relating to ADUs. I'm not going to weigh in on the side or the other, but I think there's enough interest in this community that people would like to weigh in. And I'd like to give them an opportunity to weigh in. And again, I'm willing to abide by what the voters want, but let's at least give them an opportunity to do that. So I agree, there's going to have to be some legal and staff work going on in the upcoming election, I think we have to do. So, let's see if I can still do that. Oh, as far as the CARES program, I understand the county's actually decided to fund a countywide program. Is that right?
Sort of. They, the county has received some funding to, and they're, I think they entered into a contract recently with Star Vista to operate a program that's very similar to CARES on a county-wide basis. It's kind of dipping their toe in the water. And so, you know, right now, we're grant-funded fully for the CARES program through most of next fiscal year. We'll continue to look for grants to keep that going. But, you know, I think we made it a stated goal right from the beginning that this is us doing something we think others should be doing. And when the time is right, it should transition to a county-wide effort. And El Centro is understanding of that and continues to work with us. We're hopeful that as they dip their toe in, they realize they need to go further and provide something that can really serve the entire county at the same level that the CARES program is. But yeah, the hope is that in the next fiscal year or two, we can completely transition to.
Well, where I'm coming down is it either needs to be funded by grants, or we just don't do it. I'm not in favor of using our general fund to impact other core services to provide what is really a counterfunction. And I agree, I think it's a great program, but I think that we have to stick in this period of tight finances to core services. So I think that's all I got.
And I'll just, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a clarification. We've heard a couple of questions or comments about the Measure D item. In a few hours, we'll publish our agenda for next Tuesday night, and we actually will be doing a session on that, providing information. So you'll, as a council, have an opportunity to talk about it and weigh in on kind of what the next steps are related to a measure, if you want to.
Thank you. Councilmember. Okay. I support the housing element completion. The LUP and housing element implementation, I had some thoughts and questions. As I understand, that's where we start. Implementation includes establishing these elements in our ordinances, et cetera, right? And continuing that. So, I don't know if you all remember, but having those ordinances set up and continuing the implementation has a big impact on how we regulate development. Doom's beach comes to mind. And so I think it's actually important to really nail that stuff down as we look at, you know, what the community wants in terms of how much development takes place, how it takes place. And I think that's a critical part, as I understand, implementation means. So I may actually continue that. And it would be good, all these things, we need to have some price tags attached. So what does continued implementation look like price-wise? Because there's a bunch of things I need in the limitations, you know, exactly what is the dollar amount as we're comparing some of these items. Public affordable housing projects, I support, I had the same, when I saw CUSD, I had the same questions in my head. Why do we have to deal with that at all? We still have a lot of, you know, on 555 Kelly, on the planning, I know there's a few things we're still really looking at, you know, the height of the building, parking. So I know we're going to be spending more time on that and have some decisions to make with Mercy Housing and other interested parties. I don't know if, yeah, I agree, I wouldn't put too much time and effort into the private, frankly, affordable housing until I hear some more on that, what that looks like. Rent stabilization and renter protection. I'm still not quite sure on how, when we last talked about it, staff said there's a number of ways of funding that. So my question is, can we afford the 200K this year? Or can we put that off for a year depending on how? Not what the cost is, but how we fund that. Because I think I'd want to hear more.
I think the 200K you're referring to is for the rental registry program.
There's fees, I know that.
What was approved in that item was to use the affordable housing fund to fund it. So there wouldn't be a generational impact in the initial implementation.
And we'd have fees as well, right?
Correct. It's not sustainable to draw on the affordable housing fund, but it was basically seed funding till we collected the fees for it, which we're hoping will mostly offset those costs.
Great, thanks for that reminder. So yeah, in that regard, if our affordable housing fund could cover that, to get it set up at least, I support that. Just give me a notch there. Public health and safety and emergency. I agree with what my other council members said. It's great to see that we're having progress with Seaton. And I think it's, yeah, urgent that we actually continue with that. Also on evacuation planning, CERT education for everyone. And that's also where that tabletop community exercises comes in. That's an opportunity for CERT to really be integrated into our safety and emergency planning. I'm okay with not going with safe parking for now. And I agree with what other council members said regarding the minimum wage ordinance. One way or another, we do need, whether it's getting data from ALIS or other, we just really need to know what's the impact of going over a certain amount on people's access, right? Well, especially healthcare and so on, not getting kicked off other programs. So until we figure that out, it'll be tough. We're obviously going to be increasing minimum wage. The question is by how much and where that comes from, right? Okay. Regarding the licensing cameras, well, I had an interesting conversation with our mayor, and we were talking about, something that's, we heard, but we didn't explore, because we heard from the ACLU and their concerns. And we also heard from the community about what both their concerns and some people were in support of it. But the thing that we both remembered was that Palo Alto apparently has implemented a plan, and they brought in the ACLU to work with them and address the ACLU concerns. So I would recommend that we invite someone from Palo Alto and the ACLU to come in and tell us what the heck did they come up with and how did they work that out? Because the way we were left it was like, well, the ACLU is against it. But then there's a very thoughtful community, Palo Alto's a very progressive community, that decided to go for it. So I thought it'd be great to hear how they did that and what they came up with before we make a final determination. I agree with the Climate Act finalizing and adopting. We already have that, that's really not negotiable. Thank you, Councilmember Ruttig, for adding that extra information about the viability of recycled water at this point. I think that just helps us feel comfortable not pursuing that. And I agree, we really do have to continue with our watershed and stormwater analysis and how we, and what we need to work on. Those are expensive projects. I agree with Harvey that we want to make sure we have good consultants involved. And, you know, a lot of that's going to be part of grants. And Councilmember Ruttig pointed, I'm glad the county is maybe getting more involved and can help out with that. We really don't have any choice with the amounts of water we're getting. And totally unpredictable where that water lands unless we get more sophisticated about figuring out the impact of our watersheds and stormwater. I don't know why I put it up in here. Somehow I made a comment about community gardens here, so I'll save it for later. Or I'll save myself time. I like the idea of community gardens. I just do. So if we could keep that going, because it covers generations. A lot of people get involved once they see it started. I think it's a great mental health, sustainability option for us. Okay. Economic recovery. On the Coastside Lands Development Network, I was wondering, is that something the Farm Bureau can take on? I mean, you have a Farm Bureau.
If you wouldn't mind, because there's been a few questions. Karen could probably speak a little bit more to the thinking and what came from the recovery initiative and the task force around this.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was in turn. Thank you for that.
Can everyone hear me? Great. Happy to take the question. So this item came out of the Coastside Recovery Initiative Task Force, Team ECO, which was charged with looking at how can we use our natural assets to help boost the economy? And how can the economy help protect and steward these wonderful resources that we have? And this working team was looking at this issue through a SWOT analysis where they were encouraged to think creatively, not discussing it during a budget shortfall. So I just want to create that context. But really, this line item means that there are at least nine governing agencies along Highway One. There's the Coastal Commission, there's Unincorporated County, there's city, there's state parks, there's RCD, there's MidPenn, there's Post. There are many, and they all have a vested interest in land use and stewardship, but they're largely siloed. And so Team ECO was looking at, you know, what could this look like if these groups were convened around a shared strategy and shared priorities? And thinking back to some of those task force conversations, some of the examples that came out were, what if we could look at coordinated maintenance and trash management along Highway One and our beaches? What if we could look at regional signage, including wayfinding beyond the city limits that makes it really easy to know where to get a bite to eat, or where to park, or where to access a beach? There was discussion around the possibility of creating a conservation corps that could create jobs and recreation and parks and kind of raise the next generation of environmental stewards, what job opportunities and training that could look like. You know, something that wasn't evident when these conversations was happening was how quickly this business incubator would take off. And at the last council meeting, I talked just a little bit about Coastside Venture Studio. And that incubator is unique because it's specifically looking at our coastal assets. There's three verticals, there's ag tech, water tech, built environment. I think these nine agencies would really like to know about that and should know about that. So that's kind of the spirit behind that recommendation. It's being the convener, because it just doesn't happen so far.
Thank you, Karen, that helps a lot.
And I'm glad she's here, because I butchered that, didn't I? Should have had her just speak for me in the beginning.
Hey, we have, it takes a village, we have all the right people in the room, so thank you, Karen. So yeah, actually, well, I like the idea of it. I wish we get the Farm Bureau involved. And I would be curious as to what's the cost of our staff involvement to really understand whether or not, you know, we stop. So that will help. I'm okay with letting go of the City Hall Parklet mural plan. I definitely think we should, I think digital infrastructure and access and redundancy and all those things that we're always talking about are pretty important. If we ever have the dreaded earthquake, anything that we have in place that can get us through that. So I would definitely continue with those two. I'd put the annexation off for now. The Main Street grant funds and seats. Streetscape, I'm okay if we put off resources into that now. The plan's fantastic, until we get grants, et cetera, which is maybe really where we are. Like you said, we're just finalizing the plan. Next step is grants, that's actually fine. Let's see. Carter Park came up under that topic and also came under other. I love parks. I am very concerned about the overspend we had on Carter Park that we had a vote on. It was over $1.3 million. That was after we received, you know, I had my spiel on that during our council meeting, and I just wanted to mention, I still think that's really critical that we not spend more this next fiscal year on Carter Park. On transportation. Yeah, I'm glad, Harvey, you brought that up. I think we made a pretty, I certainly made my position clear that we need to get the Redondo Beach Road, get some grants on that. I'm hoping Jill can help with that, we're looking at some of our grants. And I would love to see more county support on having Caltrans take care of that Highway One intersection with Redondo Beach and see if we can get their support on that. You know, Caltrans has a billion projects, the state has huge budget cuts. So keeping our item in front of Caltrans, we can only help we can get. Oh yeah, the TDM options for integration in city municipal code. Actually, I think that's important in order to help traffic enforcement, right? Would that be right, Matthew?
It's a separate item from that. I believe, and Catherine, I don't know if you remember kind of the context around the TDM options in the municipal code. Unfortunately, Maz is not here with us today because of an emergency. Maybe this is one that we can have Maz put together a memo that we can send out to you so you're a little more informed, and we can talk about it before we finalize the. Oh, okay, great. Helen Walters, our, a new staffer, our senior analyst in Public Works, and I'm glad she's here. Thanks, Catherine.
Hi, thank you. The TDM is a transportation demand management program. We're doing this, starting tomorrow, we're doing outreach to the community. And it will help with congestion, you know, finding suggested programs. We are, we do have two grants on it. Well, the county has one grant and we have one, so it is in process. It would, it's not being, it's not being implemented yet, but there will be proposals on what, how to help with traffic and transportation issues on the coast and suggestions. So the implementation then into the code would be dependent on the proposals that come out of the study that's happening right now. I hope that, does that answer the questions?
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
So in that case, I would continue with it, because we have grants that are paying for it. Okay. And I can't think of any topic that gets discussed more than the weather, than traffic here on the coast. Anything that might help? That sounds great. Let's see. Yes, and we would certainly want to continue with our revenue enhancement measures. You know, since this is being recorded, I do want to emphasize, I've read some stuff on Nextdoor about our budget deficit and some, you know, a couple of comments. I imagine usually from folks who don't think any tax is ever a. I imagine usually from folks who don't think any tax is ever okay, but. But when I, when I see the opposition or the blame on us that we're not properly spending money, the comments, and it was in the Half Heaven Bay Review, always seem to conveniently leave out the fact that we were, now have a $2 million extra cost with the sheriffs. This was not something that we were ready for, took us by surprise. We're not the only city. And, you know, costs have gone up, sign of the times. Frankly, we've gotten a great deal until now with the sheriffs. And so that, so I think it's important that we always mention the context for our budget deficit. It's because of the sheriff's fees. It's not based on our irresponsible spending. So I just wanted to mention that since this is a public forum, and I'll take every opportunity I can to re-mention it. Okay. The Measure D, I am in support of being flexible. You know, Harvey mentioned, well, you know, if we have an association with, if a particular, let's say ADU will be a part of a, you know, an affordable unit. I think we should, because, you know, the price for rentals keeps going up. So I want to make sure we, whatever that number is, that allows for ADUs, if they're affordable, what we mean by affordable, like what's the rent? Like, don't charge more than $3,000, $4,000, like, we need that specificity, I think. And, you know, a lot of people want, you know, here's the thing. You have a house, you got some extra room, maybe you're on fixed income, you're retiring. You want to have an ADU for your family members. Maybe to come live there, help you with costs to pay your mortgage. You know, there's a lot of stories out there. So I would really appreciate more flexibility. It's that interesting balance between a private property right and interests that we have and congestion and density, right? But I think there are a lot of people. We have a community. You know, our eight, our community of seniors is increasing and a lot more people might be in that situation where they have a home and there's still a property taxes and a mortgage. So, yeah, I'd like to see flexibility for us to revisit that a bit on Measure D. Let's see. Oh yeah, the Coastside Tram, the Coast Skyway. Well, it's not a secret that I've never been a big fan. I'm not at all convinced on the positive impact. You know, Harvey, I think, well, now I'm not sure, but one of us mentioned that it would decrease commuter traffic, et cetera. The cost is huge, so I have no idea how much we would ever have to spend. The construction, I think, will be an eyesore down 92 for God knows how long. And I don't really think people will give up their cars for their weekly commutes to get onto a tram and end up, you know, someplace around San Mateo, which may or may not hook up with other transportation for that last leg of their commute. But I think most people are really hooked to their private cars, and I'm not convinced the tram would decrease it. And I think on weekends, when we first had our first report from the vendor, Councilmember Ruddick brought aboard, it didn't sound like it was going to be that cheap. And I'm not sure how many people want to, you know, drag all their beach equipment onto the tram and come down. I don't know, I really wasn't convinced of the positive impact on it. And I certainly don't want to see too much staff time spent on it. And I just felt like making my public statement and going on it again, so. Yeah, I think. I think that's it. And by the way, thanks again for staff for helping us put all this stuff together. It's pretty complex. Brought all the right people in the room to answer our questions, so greatly appreciate that. And thanks for the public who shows up and asks us questions and gives us more feedback and everyone who participated in our feedback sessions. It was really a lot of help. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, for your input. Affordable housing. One of the things, actually, Councilmember Ruddick mentioned. I'm very interested in learning more about, or actually exploring, when it comes to the private affordable housing projects that we have here in our community. And I'm actually thinking about programs that helps our marginalized community to be able to own their home. So I'm actually thinking on the prefabricated homes, module homes, like the ones we have on Cañaraco. I'm very interested, you know, in looking into programs like that to be implemented in our community, and that's emergency housing. I know for every other housing that is happening, it takes about four years to be completed. You know, and we are now working on an 880 stone pine with, you know, the first module homes to come in this year. And that, the permits move faster, bringing in those homes moves faster. And I think that would be a way to alleviate, you know, our housing, you know, because we are in an emergency. So, you know, so that's, I know, a program that I'm really interested, you know, actually looking more into, you know, as a city, actually working with the county. Many of these homes will be for farm workers, essential workers. So if we can look into that, it would be great, you know. That's something that actually, Councilmember Brownson and I, we talked about it, you know, a few years back, about having a program like this to be implemented in the community, giving opportunity for community members to actually own their home and build wealth and eventually move into something bigger or better. So that's, I'm very interested on that. I know the, there is a lot of, a lot of work that's been done, you know, for our staff. But I'm still, you know, the rental civilization and the rental protection, you know, to be implemented is an emergency. So I'm very, you know, focused into, I think we can, we need to do that, we need to do that soon. And looking to the other options, like I mentioned, you know, about the possibility of working with, you know, with private builders to, you know, to bring programs like this into our community. It's, I know it's, I forgot what, there's a community, this is a city in California that actually implemented. It could have been, that is San Barbara, maybe south of San Diego. But I heard one of the communities actually implemented a program like this. And it was, it was very beneficial, you know, to the community. I mean, everything else, I mean, supporting, you know, the affordable housing and also, you know, make sure that we say that it's actually low-income housing, because, you know, that's what we have, you know, in our community, you know, the struggle with emergencies. It comes to not to affordable housing, but actually low-income housing. And we have to be, you know, clear on that. The, working with the school district, you know, wow, I mean, is there a benefit for us to work with them? If there is, you know, I would like to continue to do that. You know, if there's not a benefit for us, for our staff to be working with them, you know, maybe we can, you know, remove that from our, from our program. Let's see. That's, I'm there on the affordable housing, on the public safety. Again, you know, the evacuation plan. You know, it's something I've been thinking about. And I know we had a lot of emergencies in the last years, but there's something that I don't know we have actually explored. You know, when it comes to evacuation, you know, evacuation out of Half Heaven Bay, out of the coast is not an easy way out. You know, we have three ways out. Out of North Highway One, South Highway One, or 92. One of the benefits that we have with 92, we have, some of the farms have an access road. You know, and I don't know, we actually have reached out to the farms with the county to be able to use those access roads, you know, to alleviate traffic when there's an accident, some of the fragments on 92. Let me give you an example. Right on Highway 92, right in front of Pastorino Nurseries, there's been accidents right there. Pastorino has an access road that it's east of the property in, you know, and it comes right up. It's about maybe 400 yards. You know, the access road, we can use that to alleviate some of the, you know, some of the traffic. Also, there's other segments on 92 that we can access to. There's Castellino Farms, they also have an access road. Some of the accidents and some of the trees that we, that went down last year, it was holding traffic for several hours. You know, and working with them, maybe even compensate them for the use of the road when it comes to an emergency. But that would be part of the county to work with, with, with the farms, with the farm owners, you know, to, for us to be able to use, you know, some of the access roads, you know, to alleviate traffic and an emergency. I'm aware of doing an evacuation or dry run. I know we talked about it, you know, there's the. But I think would be beneficial. I don't know if we have any actually maps that our community can actually follow in case they have to evacuate. We have the evacuation centers. We have, it's marked around the coast. But we don't have an evacuation way out of Half Heaven Bay, directing traffic to go south, you know. It depends, you know, there's an earthquake, you know, which other roads are still open? There's a fire, you know, which other roads are still open? So having, having maps to evacuate and actually to be able to do dry runs, even with the emergency vehicles. So we can understand, and right now through the use of social media, these, these dry runs, you know, can actually be recorded and shown to our community as to given direction, you know, which way to go. During the fires of 2020, Half Heaven Bay High School was, became one of the evacuation centers for Pescadero and in that area. Many of the people from Pescadero, they didn't know where Half Heaven Bay High School was, right? So that's an example. If we actually show, there's ways we can get maps to show the community where to go. I know with GPS now it's easier, but not everybody uses GPS, right? So, you know, in having, we have our, you know, social media in the city that can show which way to evacuate, you know, which are the evacuation centers and have them available. So looking into the infrastructure, you know, for the evacuation, it's something, you know, that we need to look into. I'm not much for the safe parking program, you know. That's something I'm not interested in right now. I think we have other priorities, you know, in the, for our community, for, you know, our staff, you know, time should be invested on. So we can hold up on that one. Minimum wage. I'm very interested in minimum wage. You know, we can actually, you know, move that along, you know, and come up with an ordinance for a minimum wage for, you know, that needs to support community. The urgent, you know, urgent care, we needed. You know, it is something that we have been, we've needed for, you know, for several years, ever since, you know, Maz Beach Hospital closed their doors. So, you know, so working with, you know, different, different health providers, you know, where they can actually invest into our community, into the coast side, to have that available, you know, here in our community. We have a clinic. So what do we need to do to get different private health providers to invest into it as their own benefit and to benefit to their, you know, to their clients? The license plate readers, you know, I would like to look more into it. You know, it's something that I know we could use, especially, you know, right now, but I think having conversations with people in the community. Also, it played a lot of fear both directions. You know, one, for personal safety, about having cameras set in the, in the community to, for their safety. And, you know, and it is, I understand the fear. You know, there are, there's children, there's, the lighting is really bad. The last three days, actually three, four days, I've been walking around, you know, my daily walk in the evenings and night, and I've gone to different areas in Half Heaven Bay where it's very dark. Every section of Half Heaven Bay has, you know, dark areas. Pilarcitos is still dark. Alsos Lorraine is very dark. If you go into a little park, it's still very dark. If you go west of Main Street onto the, between the library and Poplar, you know, those streets are dark. So instead of investing into, into license plate readers, I think lighting, you know, community, it comes, you know, it comes to a priority before we implementing all cameras. I had a conversation yesterday with someone that, what, who had their vehicle stolen, you know, right out of Bay. And it was, it was hers and the neighbors that were actually taken and, and they think it happened because of the lighting on the, on the street. So, you know, so I would like to actually see more into that. It's going to the community in climate resilience, you know, and sustainability. We keep talking about water, right? If you walk, you know, the coastal trail, you see a lot of drainage. You know, and a lot of the water that is, is causing a lot of the, you know, drainage, it's causing erosion. Looking into farming in water, right? There's actually a way that we can actually capture rainwater that could be used. Especially, we want to have a community garden that is actually the cost for a water connection is very expensive. It comes about $40,000, $45,000, you know, that, yes, that connection. So it is expensive. So thinking about, you know, to capture the water, of course, you know, we have to do, you know, again, partly analyzing, you know, the stormwater. And, you know, which of the drains that goes to the coast, to the bluffs, can we collect the water? Can be collected and, you know, and pumped to certain areas in Half Heaven Bay that could be used to the benefit? Because we are talking about, we're not able to use recycled water, you know, for other purposes. But, you know, the, the drain, you know, the rainwater, capturing rainwater, it could be a big benefit for us. You know, it could, looking to grants about capturing the water, repurposing the water that will go into other areas in the community. And, let's see. The climate adaptation plan, you know, is to continue to work on that. There's something that we need to, we need, we need to, you know, finalize. And, in, in looking for alternatives, you know, looking for alternatives, how we can actually better drain our streets. Talking about drainage. If you go into a little park, right, if you go from, on the Quijo area, the water drains pretty good from the streets. If you go on Pilarcitos, it drains well. If you go Alsos Lorraine, it drains well, but if you go a little park, it doesn't drain. Now, there's, especially on the streets of, was at, I'm thinking of the streets. Mexico doesn't drain. The, the one, was the street north of a poplar, Spruce. You know, there's a lot of areas where the water is not draining. So looking into, and it looks like some of the residents actually did work to the street that it keeps the water from flowing. Because it's different if you go from third, in third going to fourth or to the, most to the coast, you know, to the, to the coast, to the coast. You know, it changes, you know, the way the water drains is changing and that actually is eroding the road. So that's something we need to look into, the drainage. The economic recovery development, you know, it is, it's something that I strongly believe in it. You know, it's the opportunity, you know, and I see where the, you know, the coast land network development, you know, came from. And I remember talking about that, because it is an attraction, you know, Half Heaven Bay, the coast, we have the attraction of the farms, you know, the, the, the fish markets. Those areas, you know, how we can connect. There's another. There's another, this and, and event that happens here on the coast. Crystalin, question for you. What's, what's the event called, when people invited to visit our local farms? There you go, right? Thank you much. So we have an attraction in Halfon Bay. One of the things, you know, that, you know, I, you know, mentioned before about, you know, the, you know, the parklets, you know, in, in our community on Main Street, but I think we can hold up, hold up on that one. You know, we have a, I'm more interested, you know, the other day, the streetscapes, we saw the, the gate, the entrance gate on ninety-two. I think it'd be more, more beneficial having that entrance gate on ninety-two and Main Street than actually working on Main Street itself to, yes, to direct traffic. Even, it would not change the street, it actually is just the entrance into Halfon Bay. So I would like to actually look into that and how, you know, you know, the, the benefit to actually to our economy. The other thing is, you know, the OCC is getting ready to, to open, you know, and that's something that a lot of people are actually asking questions about, about how it's going to benefit our community. And that is part of the economic recovery. And that's why, you know, one of the, it was a purpose, you know, when it came, you know, when it was first brought up in, I believe it was, was it twenty twenty, Karen? Twenty twenty-one, that, you know, how, you know, the, how COVID actually affecting our community. But from that, community members became with ideas for, solutions for their own, you know, financial support, for their own, you know, starting their own businesses, becoming more educated, preparing for the, for the future. And that's part of the economic recovery and, you know, what OCC is going to be offering. You know, that's, you know, the annexation, I think we can, you know, I know I brought it up, you know, several times in the past, but I think, you know, we are not ready for that. You know, I think we can hold, hold on, on that one. I'm more interested in the digital infrastructure. You know, we, we can see the benefit of how, you know, having a, working on digital infrastructure is more beneficial. And I know the annexation is very important for our community, you know, annexation of the Midamar Moon Ridge and, and the areas of ninety-two, you know, the farms again. So, but, you know, the digital infrastructure, I think is, is more important to me at the moment. The Farmworker Memorial, it's, I know it's, it's, it's been heavy on our staff, you know, there's been a lot of things happening, you know, around the Farmworker Memorial, but we need to continue that, you know, and, and having that available. And I believe, you know, I forgot the gentleman's name that gave us the, he was here doing public comment and commented about the Chinese immigrants, you know, here at the coast. Actually, there's more history to that, you know. Being a bit of a historian, you know, there's a lot, a lot of the things that, you know, in relation to that that happened with, after the eighteen fifty's here in, in the coast, from the eighteen fifty's into the early nineteen hundreds. So yes, to be able to recognize that. Moving on to transportation, one of the programs that actually is, is being very beneficial to our community is under the Samtrans, you know, Ride Plus program. In working with, you know, Samtrans about how we can actually increase the services, you know, of the, the program, not only to be in, in the coast, but also to actually transport our residents, you know, over the hill. I've seen people that work at our local restaurants and hotels, you know, to use this service where they actually pretty much is, is an Uber service, that they get picked up from home and they, you know, they're driven to, to work. You know, implementing that program in longer hours during the day and maybe something similar to go over the hill. We have a lot of residents that don't drive and, and they need the use of our public, you know, transportation. So working with Samtrans to be able to bring this program, you know, to increase the program to, to go over the hill. And that will be, I think, that would be very beneficial, you know, to, to our community. All the other projects that actually the city is working on, the highway, highway one, anything that comes with, about safety is, is concerning to me. I've been, you know, lucky to see a lot of things happening, you know, on the roads here in our community, the streets, the speeding, the highway one, the turning lanes that we need on highway one to go there into different areas of the community and just be able to, you know, to work with that. The Parlo Trail will be a great beneficial to, you know, be, I mean, the, the benefit. A couple of days ago, one of our local farmworkers received his electric bike, you know, that came, you know, that was part of the program that the city applied for the grant, what was it, three years ago, I believe it was, right? Twenty twenty-one, that we actually worked on the grant to receive the funding for those bicycles. And the farmworker actually took the bicycle on a ride to the, to the harbor yesterday. You know, he, just, you know, testing, you know, the bicycle. So it's, it's very beneficial. And with that, transportation and circulation, we need a speed limit on the coastal trail. We definitely need a speed limit on the coastal trail. Over the weekend, I saw a group of cyclists who were easily going over fifteen miles per hour, even maybe even faster. In some of those turns, they was, the, the trail was pretty crowded. There was, there were a lot of families on the trail. And actually came to the point where actually had to, you know, say something to the cyclists, you know, to slow down. There's no, there's no mark, speed limit. And if you've been, you know, if you're a cyclist, you know how fast you're going. If you're, so that's something that we need to actually look into having, you know, for, for safety again. Others and the CARES program, you know, I, I strongly believe that we should need to fund the CARES program. What the county is offering, you know, right now is not going to work for us. You know, the response time that they, you know, they have is, it will take over an hour for, for the, for the, for the county to respond, and that doesn't work. Especially here on the coast. It might work in the, in, in the inner peninsula, but not, not, not for us here on the coast. So we need to actually continue to, to look for grants and, and how we can actually continue this program. Parks and Recreation, I totally support that. You know, I think, you know, as, as a city, we have more, we have more to offer when it comes to parks and recreation. The activities here on the coast are, are increasing, you know, especially with, with the weather, the, the use of, of different, different parks in our community, the, the parking lots of the beach, events, you know, where the family get, families get involved, something, activity for the, for the children. So, you know, and we need a park, you know, we need a big park. And, uh, working on that one. Uh, we need, we do need a tax measure. You know, I, I think that's something that we need to, you know, bring it back to, you know, to the community and talk about, you know, the benefit of having a tax measure is something that will not be affected. I, I know our last meeting, we had a, you know, a comment, you know, when we, we talked about a tax measure. And, you know, and there might be contradicting to, you know, to what we are proposing about raising the minimum wage. But I think, you know, it would, I don't think it will affect, you know, the minimum wage. If we do a tax measure, sales tax, you know, in, in our, in our community. Measure D, I know it was brought up before about maybe excluding some of the low income housing, you know, from Measure D. Excluding even, um, ADUs for Measure D, I know we, is something we're going to visit. But it's, as we know, we are in great need of a low income housing. And, you know, the way Measure D, it's, it says right now, it will take us several years. You know, we can actually, before we can actually offer low income housing for our community. So making a change on that, I think it will be a benefit. And again, you know, looking into ways of to be able to provide housing a little bit faster, you know, than just building, you know, and the opportunity to, to own. And, and I believe that's what I have. Yes, can we take a five minutes of bathroom break? Thank you.
Some feedback from council. So the way the, the, the meeting was laid out, we have the, the exercise that we've been doing and then a break and then an additional public comment. We're not quite finished with the, the, the exercise. The next step would be kind of a second quick round. Now that you've all heard each other's comments and, and, you know, there's a chance for a little brokering and talking about different things. And then, and then we would normally go to public comment before I try to wrap things up, synthesize and talk through with you kind of where we're landed. Would you prefer to do public comment now before you do your second round of, of comments? Yep, sounds like that's what we'd like. So to the community, if there's anybody that wants to make public comment, based on what you've heard, even if you've already made public comment today, you're welcome to make another public comment. If you can fill out a speaker card, if you haven't, go ahead and just raise your hand and we'll get the speaker card afterwards. You get three minutes of the podium. Looks like Mr. Pogorov. Why don't you go ahead? Now would be the time, sir. I was going to remind you to speak in the mic, but that, that seems redundant, doesn't it?
I'm trying to get it so it hits my mouth. I have just two items I'd like to touch on. I don't think either of them was probably included in the earlier call at all. One is Councilman Roundstone's suggestion at the last council meeting that the appeals may be considered for Redondo Beach Road. Have the city take it seriously where it needs to improve that road in parallel with or in advance of the implementation of the CLT project. I am not the usual user of Redondo Beach Road, but I made a point of driving down it and back, and I found that it was horrific. I thought it was extremely dangerous at any speed of about ten miles an hour. Hot holes are like six by four feet inside. And when you get to the dangerous parking lot at the end of the road, they're worse. I, I was saying to the city manager just now that it looks like pre-roads, really. There's a pretty good road, which seems to be compressed gravel in the beginning. Then it gets pretty dicey when you get to Carnoustie on your left. And then it gets really terrible, a dip on the other side, and then it gets good again. It might be four wheels, but it's terribly important to fix that. The other quick comment I wanted to make has to do with transparency of these proceedings and the city council meetings. I think somewhere this ought to fit in. Those of us sitting in the back could neither hear nor see the material and in a situation where our eyes are not going along on these lists, that's, that's a problem. I, I moved from the back row to the front row for a long enough reason so I could begin to read that. My old eyes are not big as today, my left were glasses at home unfortunately. But this is a problem that devils the city council meetings as well. We cannot read material that's projected on the screen at any city council meeting. I made the suggestion that that, that the old procedure, which was to put the documentation about the issues, the handouts, put copies on that at the table at the door. And I noticed this because the Redondo project, even when I had the personal copies made for me only, thank you very much, the corpse office, I couldn't read them. I'd had no, I couldn't read a map of the project area. And that was kind of shocking to me. And it talks about the transparency of these proceedings. I think it needs to somewhere of concern for transparency of public functions at the city of Halfon Bay needs to be considered. Thank you very much.
Crystalin, the Coastside Chamber of Commerce, I want to echo and thank you all the sentiments about working on signage as a part of the downtown plan. And if that is the first thing that we can focus on, I do think it will do the best for our economy growth and helping those TOT and sales tax and all those different tax raises get actually brought into the city. And I do want to just note that along those lines, we, the chamber is working on a shop local campaign that we will be working closely with the city to try to get our locals to, can start or come back to spending money in downtown, because that's a part of that sales tax shortfall. And so we look forward to working with you on that with economic development in mind. And then I would like to echo the sentiment that there is roughly sixty nonprofits on the coast side, all with a different mission, mission or focus. And many of the projects that the city would like to get done, I, there's a nonprofit on the coast side that would love to help with that. And, and maybe, I know that city staff is always doing so much work and going above and beyond, and they work more hours than one should. And there's just, there's lots of us out there that can help. But sometimes we don't know when would be an appropriate time to help. And so you could just maybe look at some of those nonprofits that you guys have not already worked with, not necessarily the Corps, but what about the Lions Club? And what about, you know, those other groups that they're service oriented and they're constantly looking for projects to work on? And I think there could be some money savings on the city as well as helping spread the workload out.
Thank you. And just to remind those that just spoke, if you could fill out a speaker card. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, since you're, you're finishing your lunch, I'll, I'll jump in here. I think what we'd like to do now is, is do kind of a quick second round and more of just a council discussion on some of these items, especially on, on the ones that it appears maybe there's some differences of opinion on and, and maybe talk more about those, if there's any that it's really clear. And maybe I can just share. It seems pretty clear to us that we can, we can remove the safe parking program from our, our programming right now and our focus. Obviously, if something changed, we would come back to the council and let you know that funding or something changed on that. ALPR, there's a little, little discussion I think we need to have there because we are in preparation to bring back another item based on the previous item. So it'd be great to resolve that here today. It's clear that recycled water can, can come off of the program here. And, and then there's a couple of things we talked about already that it seems like we need to go back, get some more information about. Other than that, I think most of this is pretty clear. I think the coast side lands network, especially in the context of what Karen shared, I think deserves some discussion here. And, and I think annexation, it's a little unclear where we want to go with that, so. And then, of course, anything else you want to add or talk about.
I'm, I'm good with postponing action on, on looking at annexation. I just don't see that as a priority. We're not going to have another census for a while. I think there's time to get a handle on that issue, but I think at least for this year, I think we can delay that. You spoke previously about a, potentially a healthcare district. And And, um, I hope the group that's, you know, evaluating these ideas does look closely at, um, formation of a healthcare district. I think a lot of different things, you know, might be funded through one. I think you could fund cares, you could fund, um, you know, lifeguard activities, you could fund another ambulance on the coast. It, it's worth really, I think, doing the finances on that and evaluating what sort of services might be highlighted. Because while we might get, you know, joint, you know, blood draw facilities, it's still a long way from like urgent care. So I wouldn't postpone the discussion on healthcare districts, actually. Um, to-
Debbie, if, if you don't mind, um, just as a reminder, in this meeting last year, you had brought up, um, a similar district in, I think Mendocino County?
Yeah, it is a healthcare district, but it's called a, um, a coast life services district that serves Mendocino and Humboldt Counties. It was curated by a special legislation. So they fund a lot of different things. They fund, um, air ambulance assistance because most people in those counties have to be flown to a trauma center in Santa Rosa, you know, and they really need like emergency care, real emergency care. So I think it's, it's, it's worth exploring and I know it's kind of long-term, but you know, I'm guessing that that's where ultimately, you know, we need to be.
And I think we have more clarity this year, um, based on the work that's happened this year. So obviously leave it to all of you for direction, but I think that is something we could reach out to them at this point and invite them to, at least provide some information to this maybe presentation.
And I took, uh, Chris Lynn's comments to heart. You know, when I was speaking about economic development, I said, maybe look for a mung hanging room. I think signage might qualify, um, you know, along with all the digital stuff we need to do. But, and, and you know, we've sort of beaten this horse many years in a row about the need for signage to point into the downtown. And because I brought that up, I was wondering like why the, you know, the junction of Main Street and South Main Street and Highway one, why the downtown Half Moon Bay sign faces people driving south rather than people driving north? Seems to me you want the downtown Half Moon Bay sign, you know, at the entrance to downtown as opposed to the entrance to South Highway one. Just, just a thought. It seemed to me like maybe we need to, you know, rearrange that. Um, so, you know, just, just a couple of comments there. I think to Harvey's point about KEO, yeah, I think our stormwater analysis is going to deal with all these key water courses. Um, Sam is looking to get Army Corps of Engineer funding that would evaluate a federal role at the sewage treatment plant and the environs. So that maybe there'd be federal money to deal with like KEO water cores and the kale trans mitigation site, all with the goal of, you know, protecting the sewer authority. So I wasn't like ignoring that we need to address KEO, but, um, we're looking at other ways to, you know, get at that problem rather than the project we developed there a couple of years ago, which we can still keep on the deck burner, but anyway, that's it.
I want to reiterate what, uh, Debbie just said. I think a healthcare district, uh, is also on Ray Mueller's plate. So we could work with him, uh, to try to get that actually happen on the coast side. It's not going to happen immediately, but I think it's, it's something that will help us greatly. Um, in terms of, of people saying that we have to postpone this, we have to postpone that, um, I don't see our financial situation changing drastically in the next few years. I think whatever, uh, limitations on our, uh, revenue and, uh, our expenditures, it's not going to change much. So the idea of kicking everything down the can, kicking the can down the way, doesn't make a lot of sense. If something's worth doing, um, we should see if we can get it done this year. Now, I'm, I'm fully aware of, uh, the, the financial constraints, but I'm also aware of the fact that things aren't going to change drastically. So we need to do what can ultimately help the community the best, thinking of things like Main Street revitalization, which will cost some money now, but in the end I think will make it, uh, our community, uh, more vibrant and have more, uh, tourists coming. So that's the kind of thinking that, that I have. Uh, I'm not going to just say that we shouldn't do something because it costs too much right now, because it won't change much in the next few years. Thank you.
Councilor Branson?
Yeah, I, I just want to respond to that. I don't think we were talking about kicking everything down the road. We were talking about, one, making sure we know what the costs are now and making sure that there might be certain items that will actually end up costing us more money. So we have to look at each item separately. It was not about kicking everything down the road.
Yeah, so one of the things that comes to mind is downtown development. And I made some comments earlier about, you know, let's not worry about painting buildings. But I think signage is absolutely critical. And the signage placement is even more critical. You have a sign at the Main Street Bridge telling people this is downtown, nobody's going to see it when they're on Highway 92. It's not visible from Highway 92. You have to crane your neck and even then you can't see it because there's a curve there. So the signage placement is critical. Much more important to have big signs directing people to downtown and to the beaches than it is to have small signs saying, this is where you can get a cup of coffee. That, that kind of signage I think we can let go of right now. Let's get the big signs in. I know they're going to be more expensive, but they're critical. They're critical and they've been critical for many years. You know, I, when I moved to the coast, I, um, had a room in Moss Beach. I was working over the hill and I saw this cute little road, 92, and I thought, oh, I'll take a room on the coast and stay there for this two months that I'm going to be here. It took me a month before I realized that Half Moon Bay had a downtown. And I remember stopping people on the street in Moss Beach and in Montara and saying, is there any place you can have a cup of coffee with an ocean view? No, there wasn't any place with a cup of coffee. Anyway, it made me crazy. So, big signs. Um, I, I know I've asked this question before Catherine and, and you're the one that can answer it. Is it possible to have deed restricted ADU measure D allotments?
So I, I think you're saying, could we try again? How is this any better? Boy, oh, here we go. So, uh, there's a lot we can do with measure D. Um, and as a reminder, we're going to have an item on next week's council agenda to really dig into the details on potential options for amending measure D, some of which would require voter approval, um, all of which would require coastal commission certification. Uh, as far as, um, I, I think you may be asking about exempting, uh, deed certify, uh, sorry, uh, deed restricted units from the measure D requirement.
Yes, yes.
Uh, so that is on the table. Uh, and I guess I would suggest we probably defer to the, the full, we'll make sure to address that as part of the next week's discussion.
Okay, great. That was premature of me. I apologize. Um, in terms of the tram, I think it's a, a great idea. I don't think it's going to help us with anything here on the coast. I don't think it's going to, um, happen soon enough to help us recover. I think it's a long-term plan. You know, it's, it seems like pie in the sky to me right now. Um, okay. Oh, the community garden, absolutely. And I don't know, what, what is, is the cost for a water connection there? What are we talking about when it comes to money?
Well, I, if, if you don't mind, I'd, I'd like to provide a little more context.
Please.
So the site that is currently identified and we've worked with them for the last couple of years on is Magnolia Park. So, uh, if you come off the highway westbound on Seymour Avenue, um, maybe a quarter mile down the road, there's a big vacant lot. It's, it's very open in the front and in the back has a bunch of eucalyptus trees on it. That is our Magnolia Park development site. And back in 2022, we started the process of master planning it around the concept of doing the community garden there. And, um, we, we got pretty deep into it and then we had some staff turnover and it had to be reprioritized. It's recently come back up and we're actually actively working on that project again. The, the key is there will be entitlements required to do anything there. Any, any development we want to do and, and a community garden is development requires permitting and environmental and all those things. So rather than piecemealing it, we're doing a, a master plan of the entire park. So that has been revived in the, in the last month. Uh, we hope to get to a point where it can be master planned and have some basic entitlements so that we can reengage with SeaFog, which is the Coastside Friendship Organic Gardens Group that is, is just kind of frothing at the mouth to have this land available. But as, going back to the original question, they need a water connection to do it. Um, we have a water connection that we can already provide to that. So it's just a physical infrastructure. Um, we can get better estimates for the work plan, um, but, you know, the, the number that was shared today and I think was what we talked about before is 40 to $50,000 to build that infrastructure. Now, that doesn't build a bathroom, doesn't, it, it just basically gets the water connection and gets water to the site and then allows SeaFog to raise money and start development so that they can build, you know, what is, they're, they've been a very active participant in the master planning and the design, especially for the portion of it that would be the, um, the garden.
So is it, it's possible for us to go ahead, get the water to them and say, go ahead and do your thing and we will build the master plan around it, knowing that you're aware of what we want in the master plan? I mean, I, I, master plans take forever.
Well, we're, we're very far into the master planning process. I think where we're at right now is having some engineering work done. Um, again, the problem is it has to be permitted. We have to go through an entitlement process, CEQA, all those things before anything can happen. It's pretty wasteful to just do it for the garden and then go back and do it for the rest. Um, and, and I'm not even sure, given our future plans for that site, we could piecemeal it. And so I think that my recommendation as city manager would be stay the course, get this master planning done. Again, it's been revived by staff. It can be completed this fiscal year and hopefully then get it permitted and get, get the water connection to them. You hate that answer, don't you?
My recollection is in Sacramento, three or four years ago, there, there was legislation to actually facilitate the creation of community gardens in municipal areas. So I think we need to do a little research on that. I think the intent of this bill, these bills were to make it much easier. And I think it was built in, um, I had the bill, but we can look at it. I just wanted to go back to the issue of Redondo Beach Road and repairs and things. I, I mentioned something at Tuesday's meeting and I just wanted to bring it up again, that, um, you know, I talked to staff about, currently there's a $16 billion bond bill in Sacramento that would provide, you know, a lot of funds for like coastal conservancy and other agencies to do a variety of resilience projects, including, you know, parks and trails and that sort of thing. But apparently there is some language in one of the bills already that deals with coastal access. And so we talked about getting some language change that would allow monies to be allocated for the purpose of improving and enhancing coast, designated coastal access. So the, you know, for us it would be like, um, Poplar, Kelly, Redondo Beach Road, you know, the other ones, and maybe give money to state parks, do the same thing for excess roads, you know, into their properties. But I think, you know, this is, we're not going to see another bond like this in, in many years and it would, would be on the November ballot. I think now's the time to make sure the language, um, supports, you know, our needs in terms of coastal access and that would be road improvements and pedestrian access and that sort of thing. So I wanted to follow up on that. I think it's really important.
Thank you. And we'll also follow up on that other legislation you mentioned about the community garden. I, I would say one thing I've heard loud and clear from all of you tonight is that working with the community garden folks to me, that floor is, is a priority. I think I forgot that for all of you.
Any, uh, any more comments from our council members? That's it? I don't have anything else?
Okay. So I think what I'd like to do then is, is just go through each column and just make sure we've got some clarity on a few of these things. Um, under affordable housing, uh, it seemed like the, the main change would be, um, just confirming that, uh, the implementation of the LUP and some of those general plan elements. We're working on the safety element, working on the housing element. We, we remain focused on those. Can we delay the work on the rest of that, um, from a legal standpoint? And then I, I think there was some comments just about potential implications that could lead to legal issues. So there's some exploration we need to do and we'll include that as we bring back the work plan. Um, Joaquin mentioned pursuing, um, more modular housing, home opportunities, homeownership opportunities. Um, I think that needs to be explored a little bit more before we, we kind of figure out what that would look like and get feedback from the council on it. So what I propose is that, that staff meet with him and get, get a sense of exactly what we're talking about. And then we can determine what that might look like in the, in the work plan and let you all weigh on, in on it when we bring that back. Is that an acceptable approach to that? Okay. Um, under pub, public health, safety and emergency prep, um, we're going to drop the safe parking program from, um, the work plan. Minimum wage, we all know where we're at with that. Um, I, I will add, one of the things I mentioned is, is I've reached out to some of our legislators and I want to see the, um, state's legislative analyst office do some work on this. I actually heard back and got sent a link. They actually have been studying this, not the part that we needed to study, but they've been studying minimum wage. So still working with them to see if we can actually have some statewide work done on this as it relates to public benefits. So, um, and I know staff is evaluating and reviewing the, the current report that they've published really recently, like the last two weeks. So, um, some positive move on that. Um, so ALPRs, we, we had our meeting, uh, a month or so ago. Um, the, the consensus from council was interested in learning more, but we need to talk about costs, locations and, and kind of purpose. Um, the sheriff's office has been working with Public Works, uh, about, um, infrastructure and the vendor on potential locations, the benefits of those locations. Um, there was a comment about the ACLU. So I, I brought it up before, but it, it was kind of, you know, just a, a passing comment. We've, we've been working with the ACLU. This is their approach. If there's any question that the city may or may not move forward with it, they are a hundred percent against it. And that is the stance that they will take. If at some point the council says, you know, I think we're going to move forward, they will change to working with us to build better policies. I mean, that's, Captain Albin can confirm that's, that's essentially, oh, she's outside. I promised that she would concur. That's what they told us. They, they will not take any stance other than we're against it until the city decides that we really want to pursue this. So, um, we have been working, Captain Albin's been working with Palo Alto. Um, council member Ruddock has provided us some of the documentation from Palo Alto and I think we've actually gathered more, um, to, and, and we have staff analyzing the differences between the existing county ALPR policy and Palo Alto's, which has some really good best practices, to see the differences and, and what we might be able to implement here. So my recommendation is, we were planning to come back, I think the second meeting in April for further discussion. The lift's already been done and it's really just bringing it forward for discussion and, and then we can get further direction from you at that point. And that'll be part of the discussion. Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have cost proposals based on how many cameras we want to put in and where they would go in and, and what the implications of that would be. So, okay. Under community and climate resilience and sustainability, um, recycled water, we'll remove that. Obviously if something grand changes, we will immediately bring that back for discussion. Um, we, I've, I've heard some, you know, different comments about stormwater- I've heard some, you know, different comments about stormwater and watershed analysis, but I think the big, big thing I've heard is a push for a more regional approach to it, see if we can't get the county or CCAG. Debbie, One Shoreline, I know they're focused on erosion, but is stormwater another area that they're well focused on?
I think the landscape in the county is going to be One Shoreline and CCAG coming up with a sort of regional approach because it's really the only way that you can do it affordably and do it at scale, you know, rather than each community, you know, trying to do it on its own. So it might be like a watershed basis or, or, you know, breaking up, you know, the entire county into flood districts rather than the three that exist now, et cetera. But everybody agrees it's a priority problem. So I think we need to at least do the analysis for our own community and have that ready to be incorporated into any, you know, larger scale plan, but be able to position ourselves for funding for, you know, the priority areas when we have a few.
I will say on the ones that we're currently focused on more acutely, Kehoe and Pullman and Seymour, those are being focused on because there's some very specific and acute risks and challenges happening and I don't think we can back off from them. I think we have to move forward. There's some legal implications. On Kehoe, there's a settlement that requires that we're working on it. And so I think there's this kind of parallel track that we're on. Deal with the acute issues while also focus on a really regional approach to this.
Yeah, and I was just thinking about, you know, the rest of the city and the rest of the city's watersheds, which currently are not emergency situation, so don't have to be dealt with today. I would love to see it be done on a regional basis, have us not pour a whole lot of our money into it when it could be done as a coast side. That's all.
And I did hear a comment from the mayor just about, and I think this is something we'll talk with Public Works and Engineering about, but could as part of the analysis be looking at ways to actually capture and reuse some of the stormwater for agriculture or other purposes here in the community? I'm not an expert on any of that, but definitely we'll bring that to Engineering and see if that's something that can be incorporated.
To that point, I think that's a really good idea. You know, in the case of Pillar Seados Creek, you know, there is room in the flood plan to do detention basins. And it might require, you know, leasing from farmers or outright buying land, but there's room right now to the north of Pillar Seados Creek and some places in the south to do, you know, detention, bypass sort of things. So, and that's why, I always thought that the corner of ninety-two and one, that low lying area is like a perfect place for a detention basin because there's not many other uses that could use that property without a lot of fill or, you know, land alteration or what have you. But there are places in our relatively undeveloped area where we could do some of these things and there are a lot of different agencies that fund them. We just need a, you know, sort of a plan that identifies priority areas, that, you know, maybe some mechanism to, you know, provide whatever match we need for various grants and understand the scope and scale of the problem. So the analysis is important to have. I already said that, sorry.
And then, again, I've heard loud and clear the desire to press forward on the community garden work, which luckily has been revived and we can provide more detail in the work plan itself. Under economic recovery and development, so if we could just quickly have a conversation, again, based on the good context we've gotten from Karen about the Coastside Lands Network Development. And I guess one question I'd have for Karen is, you know, it was mentioned, the relationship to the incubator and I just wonder if maybe there's an opportunity for them to carry some of this work forward as part of their work?
Not much to say, other than I think that there's synergy there. And so, you know, we could couch that under the Opportunity Center and the incubator. Coastside Venture Studio is so new, it's going to require a little bit of time and resources from staff to get this off the ground. It just started. I think we've been in contract with American Energy Society for three to four weeks. But these startups that we're starting to have conversations with, it's really fascinating. We're discussing one under the ag tech area and another one underwater tech. I think it's going to be really important for those startups to know, if they're kind of looking at the coast as a living laboratory, which is part of our appeal, that's what makes our incubator special, then they're going to need to know, have relationships with different farms and different fishermen and go beyond that one room where they have a desk and storage space on Main Street, right? Because the whole point is for them to have a home base here, but to go out in the field and find creative solutions around kelp and eucalyptus and regenerative agriculture and look at really creative ways where we could be adapt, we could be creating really innovative solutions to a changing climate and maybe even be generating local jobs and incentivizing them to stay here. But in order to do that, it's going to require a lot of conversations with the county, with Post, with areas that are beyond our control within the city limit.
So I think maybe in the work plan, we'll make it clear that this can remain a priority, but it's really not for staff to be pursuing, but making sure that we're creating opportunities for other people to dig in on this. Is that fair approach? Okay. It sounds like the City Hall Parklet and Mural Plan, which is really kind of a community effort as well, needs some book and we may not be able to dedicate the resources we want to it right now. The one thing I'll say on that is I think we'll take a look at where we're at with it as we've had to divert resources away from it for things like the rental stabilization and those types of things. It's possible that as those wrap up and we can provide a little bit of staff support that something that is privately funded could move forward. So we'll talk about it and bring something back in the work plan and it may just be to put that on hold for a year or there might be an opportunity to move it forward with minimal staff support. It sounds to me like annexation, we will put on hold, although our work with Lafco continues on the healthcare district. The other thing I'll say on annexation is with the county doing due diligence right now on the Bay City Flowers property, that's also going to play into any kind of an annexation at Moon Ridge or south of town. And so I think it does behoove us to let that play out and get another, you know, and give the county time to figure out how they might want to use it because that might affect our plans as well. And it sounds like it remains a high priority, the signage, getting people downtown. I will point out, those that were here last Tuesday saw, but there actually has been an effort, there's an existing sign on ninety-two next to the corp yard that is owned and managed by the Chamber and they've donated that space for a pretty expedited process. And I think the sign is in production right now and there's a beautiful new sign that's going to go there. It's not the arch, you know, but it is something that hopefully will catch people's eye early enough that by the time they get to Main Street, they might actually make that left turn. And then, of course, a beautiful sign when you're leaving that says, hey, come back, you know? So that's, I think that's a step in the right direction, but it sounds like we're ready to really push for the grander entry. And your comment on the south main signage and where the language is, I've heard the same comment from a few people in the community. So it's something we'll talk about. I don't know how much it would cost to flip flop those and I can't speak to the thinking of how that ended up the way that it did, but. Right, right. So that's kind of an aside, we'll take a look at that. Under transportation, circulation and mobility, oh, sure. That remains very high on the list. You know, the good news is, I think through great work by some folks on the MidCoast Community Council and some of our staff and Supervisor Ray Mueller, the middle mile work that we've been promised and then got removed, got put back in. And so that work is moving forward and hopefully will be completed in the next couple of years. So our focus, working with the MidCoast Community Council is really that, what you call last mile. How do you get that backbone out into the community to improve everybody's access, create more competition so that we're not just relying on AT&amp;T and Comcast and kind of beholden to whatever they're doing? Is that what you're looking for?
I would note there's also potentially some incubator projects on that, so.
True, yeah, that's a great thought. On transportation, I think the big thing, we'll go back and talk about TDM because the grant portion is really the first step. The next step was incorporating things into our code and some implementation, which will all come at a cost. So I think we'll get with the Public Works team, come up with a plan and it'll make a proposal in the work plan when we bring that back. And then it was a little unclear, so let's talk about it, the Skyway. Now, last year in the conversations, not much different than this year, but we were directed to include it in the work plan to provide some staff support to the community folks that are working on this, get some information, some data. Moz has worked pretty closely with them over the last year and to work on funding. And I think there's been a grant identified. The real key right now is finding the right agency to accept the grant and kind of lead this. And I don't think, especially right now, that's us. I have been talking to somebody in the audience who's very involved in this and we've got some good ideas, you know, because it connects somewhere, like the city of San Mateo and they have, you know, different challenges, but there might be an opportunity there. And then, of course, someone like San Trans or the County Transit District might have a hand in this as far as receiving the grant. So I think other than some very brief support there, that's probably as far as we're going to go on this right now.
Yeah, San Trans had expressed interest previously. You know, we actually had a meeting with the San Trans planning rep, the head of the planning unit, but then she got another job. So need to circle.
I think I heard that, yes.
But, you know, the big obstacle, I don't think the obstacle is management or ultimately money. Management needs to be worked out, but there's, you know, a conservation easement around the reservoir. And that, I think, is the biggest potential obstacle to the project. There is language that looks promising about exempting cable systems. You know, what is a cable?
Cable could be interpreted a lot of different ways, you know? Tramps hang from cables, don't they? I do want to be clear, what we were talking about and especially the grant funding was just for the feasibility study, not even getting towards implementation. But again, we feel like there's some other agencies that might be better fit and will help to make those pathways, but I think that's as far as we can go. And then.
I think the county should definitely be involved in the negotiations.
Redondo Beach and Highway One, it's loud and clear and I think we already kind of had that direction, but I think it's been reemphasized that there needs to be some work studied and work with Caltrans to try to move that forward as quickly as possible. It being the only, I believe this is the case, it's the only beach access or coastal access that doesn't have that safe left turn pocket and safe, you know, entry to the highway. And then there's a few more immediate things we think we might be able to do to make it safer. So, and then, you know, I agree with what I've heard. I've driven down there and the last several months have wreaked havoc on that road and it is a real big problem. There has been private development out there that I think has had some impacts and I believe as that project finishes up, they actually have to do some remediation work out there. But I think it goes beyond that. I think the city's going to have to dedicate some of our road funds to getting that road into better shape. Um, I think, I'll just say I've heard an emphasis on recreation. You know, this is not the year to where we'll have the money to invest, but I think just making sure we have a renewed commitment to look for ways to expand our recreation offerings wherever we can. You know, recreation, if done right, can at least pay for itself and I think that has to be part of the focus and that's being studied right now in the cost recovery and fee study. You know, we've been working on that for many years. We have our Sundays, but recently we've heard from the district and Boys and Girls Club that they want to go back to the table and dig in more on this. So I think things might be right for that and it's something we've been talking about and wanting for a long time. So at the end of the day, we have some partners that have to be good players and we have great relationships with the Boys and Girls Club for sure and we've had a good relationship with the district. We will see how that evolves as their leadership changes, but it seems like there's some renewed interest there.
You know, I want to add something here maybe because it's come up recently and then I heard a comment today. So when the issue of electrical bikes on the, you know, West Trail came up, this council unanimously wanted to not have them. So we thought there are a lot of issues involving that, safety, et cetera. Then the state somehow magically kind of overruled all cities. And I still would love to trace exactly what kind of lobbying happened by whom to make that happen. So I'm always kind of wondering, is it something that we'd like to explore with our legislative lobbying group to perhaps carve anything out still around that? I don't know whether cities have pushed back or what the deal is, but it always felt a little kind of suspicious how that happened, that the state did that. And I'm surprised there hasn't been any more, or we could form, consolidate with some other cities on a strategy against that. We can't be the only ones. Yeah. Right. And where do they stand today? We don't know. So I'm just wondering, do you feel it might be worth, because it's always bugged the hell out of me and I keep seeing more examples on the coast, on the trail, because I live on it practically, of people doing some pretty dangerous stuff and things haven't even gotten crowded yet, you know? Good weather. Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I think that can be added to the legislative subcommittee and we can work with Townsend, you know, they can ping other areas. They're familiar with statewide what's going on and see if there's any movement towards that. I've asked Matt Nichols from Public Works, who's working on, you know, he was working on the policy and it shifted towards speed limits and I've asked him if he could just give us a quick update because that came up as well.
Good afternoon, can everyone hear me? Yeah, so recently we gave an update to the Parks and Recreation Commission and BPAK on this very subject. Out of that update kind of came the philosophy that, yeah, shifting more towards speed limits for the time being. There's other Senate bills and assembly bills that are possibly coming down the pipeline for this and we think that as years continue to go by, we'll see more of that legislation kind of happening at the state level. There was a bill that passed last year, I want to say it was AB three hundred, I'm just going to guess it was like three ninety-two, essentially requiring a study, a safety study looking at accidents on bicycles and e-bikes. That would most likely go to cause more legislation to come down the pipeline in the future. So as that's all kind of happening right now, it seems like the best move is to take a step back from the specific e-bike aspect, just to see what else trickles down from the state level before we take the time and resources to do something that might be moot. Does that make sense?
And speed limits are something that can apply to all cyclists, which as we've heard, doesn't necessarily need to be. And yes, Councilmember Brownson has pointed out enforcement's a problem and some of our ideas that we had last year about enforcement would probably come at a cost, which we may not have. But I guess what I'm hearing is maybe this year at least, we need to bring this back to council and have further discussion, some legislative updates and some options that we might be able to move forward. Thank you, man. I think, I'm just going to give my fellow staff, I think we're pretty clear on where we're at. Really appreciate, you know, council's recognition and understanding of where we're at financially and some of the constraints we have ahead and really staying focused on the work plan that we laid out last year that is continuing through this next fiscal year. Removing things that aren't really worth our time and the things that we're adding are very focused and I think we can plan around them. So the next step in this process is for us to now take this back to the staff level and develop the really detailed work plan with dates and timing and. work plan with dates and timing. And this one will be a little less finite when we bring it back because there are some questions that we have, but we'll try to be clear on what those sections are. And even, I think, as we develop the budget, some of these things we might identify as, if we can work through certain budget challenges, we'll move forward with this. If not, it's something we'll postpone. So it'll be a little more nuanced this year than it has been in the past.
To a comment made by Mr. Grigoriev. I agree. It is obscene that we do not have visible and audible communication with the audience. It's got to happen. And it's, I know it's been difficult and I know we've worked on it in many different ways trying to fix it. But other council members, other council chambers probably have it working. I don't know. I don't know why we have to. That's not legible to me. It's barely legible to me. I don't know. So I think I'd like to see us working on that.
And it is something we've been working on at the staff level, but we can prioritize it. The audio is going to be a challenge. I mean, what we have here is the same equipment that everybody uses. It's top tier equipment. And I'm hoping, based on what we've learned today and heard today, that our IT staff can do some work to at least enhance it. But...
These are terrible. If you're too close, you're spitting at it.
If you're two inches behind it, you can't be heard.
Yeah. And that's the bigger problem is, why do you have to be so close to speak to it? So we'll look at that. But again, this is top of the line equipment. So that's a challenge. The visual, I think, is where we can have the most impact.
What about things like, you know, headsets for people who are, you know, older or hard of hearing?
Almost like a closed loop system.
You know, a closed loop system. They can still sit in the audience and they can hear the presentations at least, you know, to match the visual. I think something that might be like hearing assistance, we might look at too.
And I'll just share, because I know this is going to be a concern. We do have what's called PEG funds, that it's a separate funding stream that is dedicated to providing public access to our meetings. We help fund some of PCT's work, but we also use it for some of our technology. And we do have some funding that we can use towards this. So any of this work, hopefully, we can accomplish without hitting the general fund.
Just a quick note on that. When we use our translation services, and when we had the Spanish speaking listening session, and then someone like me who's not super fluent in Spanish was using the translator. And it was pretty uncomfortable. And then I realized on the translator, there is a little hole where you could just put in your own wired earbuds, much better quality. So maybe we should just publicize that a little more for everybody. BYOH.
I think the visual problem is probably bigger than the audio problem. I mean, our screens ought to be led, you know, easily read.
Yeah. And we think, we've already been exploring it. We think newer technology with projectors will help. But I think at the Ted Adcock, we're looking at how do we make the screen bigger? Yeah. Although that's not going to be perfect. So I think we've also heard the comments that making sure we have the printed copies available for folks and things like that. But, thank you.
Any more comments that we adjourn? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.